All righty, okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Monday, January 22, 2024. We'll get on with the agenda. I'll call the meeting in order. Roll call?
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor O'Talley, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
Okay, thank you. New business, Public Works. So, Bill, if you can come up, present your budget to the council.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I'm here this evening to present the Public Works Highway Budget for fiscal year ending 2025. This year, we have a decrease of 1.71% in the operating budget and an overall increase of 6.75% in the total highway budget. The decrease in the operating budget was driven by reductions in the Roads and Streets Division, which includes management's on-call pay, contracted services to support our computerized maintenance management system. What that is, is last year's budget, we had 105,297 in there to support a computerized management system for work orders, et cetera, all through the highway. We didn't have to fund that this year, hence the reduction of that. Contracted services and drainage of $20,000. That was money that we had set aside to support stormwater drainage study at Five Corners and the Four Corners. So, we didn't need that. After all, that ended up being funded by a grant. And snow and ice, which is overtime that went, the actual overtime went down to 12,000, went down a total of $12,348. And the reason for that is, we look at the last five years of overtime for storms. We throw out the high, we throw out the low, and then we average the three. And so, it's been, you know, less and less storm, snow accumulation over the last several years, so hence, that line item went down 12,348 bucks. The highway capital budget includes, this year will include milling, milling repaving of Ramstall Street, Cottage Street, and Park Avenue. That cost is 270,675. Going to replace a 2010 F-350 utility truck. That's our concrete workhorse. So, that really is day-to-day, that's out on every job, running, loaded up with forms. You know, we contract out the paving, but we do all of the asphalt work, all the sidewalk work. So, that is really our workhorse for the fleet. We also have Pine Island Road culvert. So, that is the stormwater culvert that goes underneath Pine Island Road. That's $250,000. And lastly, funding for engineering and design for Storm, Shore Avenue Stormwater, and that's $50,000. We're looking at trying to resolve the problem that we have down at the end of Tyler where it meets Shore Avenue. As the tides have been coming in, the water table's been getting higher and higher, so now we've got problems with water coming in, our outfalls flooding out the bottom of Tyler Avenue. It's also getting so high that it actually spills over into the detention pond, which is right there by the beach entrance. But that's that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And with that, I welcome anything you've got.
Okay, I'll open the floor to Council. Questions? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I'm guessing there's a, that this is either an error or a placeholder or something, but on the line for fleet, under fleet maintenance, the FICA line, in estimated 2024, it says $5,000 when the budget is $8,000?
What sheet is it? Admin? Top, should say something on the top, top left. Either admin or fleet maintenance.
Okay, if you go to the third page, Bill?
Yeah.
It's under fleet maintenance. FICA is fourth line item down, and it's in blue.
Okay.
So, Deputy Mayor, please ask your question.
It just seems an odd outlier that it's so low.
Um, so...
Because the other payroll number, like the other numbers, like for the full-time personnel, those numbers are in line with your budget.
Okay.
But that one seems like an outlier.
An outlier? I'll check it. I'll double-check it.
And it, in my, on my sheet, it's in blue.
Yep, let me see that. Okay. All righty.
Can I ask another question?
I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
So, this budget is going up overall, hold on, where did it go? 6.75%, right?
That's correct. That's total. That's the operating budget, which was a cut, and capital. So, capital's really what's driving up the increase.
And this whole budget is going over to the town for approval?
It has to, yeah.
I'll get this in the police budget to the town manager, close the business on the last day of February.
And I suppose I could do the math on this if I wanted to, but do you remember what was the increase last year that we brought to them?
FICA, it's been consistent, right? Oh, you mean the total increase?
Yeah, the total increase last year that we brought.
Percentage? I don't have the percentage.
Let's see.
It was 1, 1.3%.
Is that overall or just in the...
Overall.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that the town is going to ask you to defend that large of an increase considering last year we didn't do such a large increase. What is your plan for that?
So, if you look at the budget, we really sharpened the pencil on everything that was in the operating budget. Everything that's driving the increase is truly capital. So, the roads that we have that we're going to mill and replace, all three of them, the metrics are very low on the pavement conditioning index. That's a big chunk of money right there. That's the 270,675. The fleet vehicle that we have to be replaced, we usually shoot for 10 years with those. That is the workhorse. It's 2010, it's 20, I'm sorry, so it's 10, it's 13, 14 years old. The bed on the back of it is, is damaged at best. Chassis starting to get rust underneath it. I really, truly need to replace that vehicle. The Pine Island culvert, I can't cut that either. That's $250,000. We've had that on the capital list for a number of years now. We just completed the study work for it, the design and engineering for it. With all of the rising waters down there, it's truly the first piece, the most important piece, and the components for the repairs that we have down there to fight back all of the flooding that we've got coming in from our outfall. And the last one, again, too, that's, you know, it's only $50,000. That's for the engineering and design, the look at the study for the flooding that we've got down at the end of Tyler. That, those two things there, the flooding has really caused some havoc over the last couple of years. You know, if I were to drop any one of those, you know, if you were going to ask me, you have to drop one of them, I would drop the truck and try to let that, you know, go through and try to get that the following year. That would take me down to, I think I figured out, 3.71%. It's still, you know, it's not as low as it was last year, but, you know, that's, that's the only thing. I can't cut the operating budget. That's all, a bunch of that was salary increases.
I'm not asking you to cut, I'm just, I'm just anticipating. And I do think, you know, especially with the recent weather, we've had so many issues with flooding that, to me, those projects have all been pushed as far as we can push them. So, I'm in favor of you presenting this budget to, to the town. I just would like to, I want to be aware and anticipate those things that might be sticking points with them.
To add to your narrative, I've been in discussions with Town Manager Burt, and they are going to do some studies similar to the one that we're doing on Shore Ave about putting check valves in their stormwater drain system, which is one of the things we're going to do. I've also reached out to Senator Blumenthal's office, Senator Murphy's office, and Congressman Courtney's office to see if they can give me some assistance and money. They're looking at that. They did direct us to a couple areas to go for grants, but the grants aren't guaranteed. So, I want to leave this in here. And I agree with you. We have flooding. Jupiter Point is flooding, and that's mostly coming from the seawater just coming in. The flooding down Shore Avenue, South Prospect, all that is because the water's coming from the seawater, and the height of the seawater pushing back and forcing water back up through stormwater drains. So, we need to address that. And it's picking up, it's getting worse every year over the last two or three years. So, I agree with your narrative. Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield, and then Counselor Norris.
I guess the insurance is going up a little bit. Is that something that's a normal progression of increase?
Yes, just to touch on the benefits for all of the budgets at this point, because we are so early in the process, we did put a 5% placeholder. I am going to evaluate those a little bit more this week and try to get with our insurance consultants. I know the, like, our liability and property insurance is really tough at this point because the market is volatile. We just went through that with, with one of our properties that is kind of an off-cycle renewal. So, I'm going to be looking at those, and hopefully, we can maybe reduce some of those if possible. But that is normally is just a 5% placeholder, then we reevaluate it.
Anything else? Anything else, Counselor Sheffield? Okay, Counselor Norris?
First thing, is there a, an assumption on full-time, non-union pay increases, a percentage? Citywide, department-wide?
Not at this point. I'm waiting, well, hold on, let me finish the question, finish the answer. So, I'm waiting on HR to get back to me. We are in the middle of a staffing study, wage termination. I know the town's going to be talking about theirs tomorrow. We are, the numbers have not been provided to me, so I have not had a chance to vet If, if I get the, if I get the information in time and I've asked HR director to expedite highway and police, since those budgets are up to, two up first, that way, it'll give me an idea of where I'm going to go. So, and, so, Linda's out on vacation until Thursday. I'm going to be bringing this to you guys on, if you approve it or authorize, on Monday. And then if, but if anything changes, I'd have to come back to you with changes on the, on the budget before I send it to the council, the town council. I know it's a long-winded answer to your question, but it's, I need you to understand that it's a little more convoluted than just yes or no.
I only ask because I see in some 6.5, and in others 2.5. So, I'm assuming union is 2.5?
No.
So, it depends where you're looking at. So, one thing that we do is we run a report on, so hourly. So, budgets depend on either Public Works work, highway work, sanitation work, or facility work, some, some maintenance work. So, it divvies out that way. So, I run reports through all our timesheets. We gather timesheets every day. Everything goes into a big report. We run metrics on that, and that's how we determine how many, what the cost is for each, depending on, you know, I've got a number of guys that are full-time sanitation for, from 7:00 in the morning till lunch, and then they go over and work on other things. I pay half a body just to clean the highway garage, that type of thing. So, the hours equate out to that. So, that's kind of how it moves around a little bit. And the same thing with the garage. If you're looking at the fleet maintenance guy, I have one guy in there full-time, and then depending on the volume of work that comes in, I'll grab another person and utilize him in the garage as needed, and that tweaks those numbers ever so much. If you look at the salary for the garage, it looks like it went up a little bit more than another one. That's only because of the amount of hours that one of the mechanics is spending to assist the full-time guy in there.
So, what I heard you say was, you take the time to analyze each worker's job code, so to speak, and then further detail it amongst the divisions.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
But overall, for the collective bargaining, we had six negotiations this year. All the unions went up, and they went up more than the average of 275 or 3. Some of them had some significant increases in order for us to bring them up to market value. And then, and so, that's that for the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. So, I notice OPEB hasn't changed or doesn't change?
No, we've kept that at 26,200, $2,620 a person for, actually, I think it may have been prior to 2015 when I started doing the budget. We've just made an effort to continually fund it and just kind of keep that funding the same so it doesn't fluctuate.
Thank you. So, if you can explain, I heard you say something about software maintenance, and we no longer need to fund that. Why is that?
So, last year, we spent 105,000, let's see, 105,297. So, that was a contract that we'd signed with Trimble City Works. That's to establish a brand-new computerized maintenance management system for Public Works. In the past, we have been, you know, on paper, work comes in, jobs come in, we look at them, the manager goes out, looks at the job, estimates how many people that we're going to need, orders the material. The computerized maintenance management system is truly the way to go. So, I would like to eventually get a planner-s scheduler, so a person in that role, full-time on a computer, and that person will be going out estimating jobs, ordering the materials. So, when the manager comes in, what you say, it poured out. It's raining out, I can't go do the job that I wanted. You can go into the queue, an electronic queue, and say, hey, what do I have? I got three guys that need work, half, you know, what do I have? Or I got all the material on hand. I got the guys down by Eastern Point Beach right now. Is there anything down there? Boom, there it is, print it out. So, it's really an efficiency thing. Yeah, so it truly tells you how many people you need, you know, you can determine that, how many man-hours that I've done on this and that. So, it's really the way that we're going. And it's kind of comes from the industry I've been in. So, we're incorporating that in as well. So, last, the year before, we did the stormwater model. This year was the Public Works model. So, so, we paid for that last year. That's going to be rolling out within the next couple of weeks, the, you know, the process of getting it going. And then, I don't have to fund that. So, that was already spent for that role, and after that, it's just going to be a maintenance fee.
Got it.
In addition, it's also going to help us with our asset management across the board, and one of the things we're looking at.
Yeah, so, we're getting on board. Groton Utilities is also getting on board. We're going to be doing a fleet package. It's really going to be beneficial for the city.
Well, thank you for your foresight, but let's keep going.
Okay.
So, you're, let's talk about Jupiter Point. So, you do have these Roads and Streets capital improvements. Are these, any of these going to be bonded, or are we looking at straight general fund?
Right now, we're just replacing the culvert that goes underneath Pine Island Road down on the bend, on the corner right there. That culvert has been failed for some time. There are two parallel drainage pipes that take the water under the road, and it heads towards the boat launch, and then heads out to the outfall into Fisher's Island Sound, right? So, that is going to fix that piece. And then, after that, we're going to work on other areas. So, once I fix that culvert, I'm going to have to work with the state. We've already got deep involved, two Army Corps of Engineers, to look at cleaning out that trough that runs across the one personal property down there that heads towards the pump station and out. That's been a problem as well. So, that needs to be maintained.
Sure.
It's not on city property right now. It's publicly owned, privately owned, but we'll be working, the state's already been in touch with that homeowner. Cleaning the culvert out first is going to lead us towards remediating the whole, the rest of the project, kind of phase two.
But there's 250, 250,000, and there's 270,000 for these two projects. I guess I'm asking, why not bond those?
So, yeah, 250 to replace that culvert.
Yeah.
And then, 50 is over on the, that's down by Shore Ave. Yeah, Shore Avenue, and that.
And then, another 270 for Ram Colton Park Ave.
Uh, that, so that's the paving.
That's, okay.
That's paving, yeah, that's paving. Ramstall, Cottage, and, yep, the other route.
But I guess I still, I'm still curious, like, why we wouldn't bond this $300,000?
Mayor, do you want to look at that, or, I don't know?
So, you have to remember the funding source, which is the town for the highway budget. So, everything goes to the town. We, the town did issue a bond a few years, I think it was around 2013, 14 timeframe, to do road projects, and that has since expired and been used up. And I don't believe they were looking to issue another bond for road projects. So, everything goes to the town as part of the, the budget as a whole, because of the funding.
All right. And then, the last question is, if I can find it. So, under contractual services pavement, you are going down, I think, $95,000.
Yep.
For crack ceiling and patch.
So, that's crack ceiling and patch. We always have $20,000 in there every year.
Yep.
That's what we spend on crack ceiling, maintenance for the roads. That's the line item where I added the City Works before, which was the addition of 105,297. Okay? So, I subtracted that out, but then I added, reinstated another $10,000, and that's going to be paying for concrete curbing that we're doing. So, that's really the shift. Instead of going down 105,297, I went down 95,297. I kept 10, and that's going to pay for the concrete curbing. I don't have a curbing machine, up on the roads that we're going to be paving, if that makes sense.
It does. Here's my next question then.
Okay.
So, in, actual for '23 was $17,000.
Yep.
Don't have files on what we actually budgeted for '23. I, I guess, to rephrase the question, I'm asking, are we not doing something by decreasing by such a large percentage?
Great question. Nope, we're good. So, as I stated, so, all the way through 2021, 2022, 2023, the budget always had $20,000 for crack ceiling. And when I added the City Works model in, that's what jumped it up.
That's what jumped it up.
That's what truly jumped it up. And this year, I would have reduced the whole thing, but I retained $10,000 just to do the concrete curbing that's up there, if that makes sense.
I promise, very last question.
Okay.
Was that it? Or you have one more last question?
I promise, last question. All right. So, roads, no, snow, snow.
Snow, okay.
Going down snow, 13,000.
Yep.
I get your rationale.
Yeah.
However, what, is there a mechanism that if we have a normal winter?
I know.
And we're going to go over budget, is there a mechanism that you need to seek approval for, or is it, no, we just keep going and we'll deal with it when we come back in April and May? Granted, I know it's a year out.
I know. It's just, I think that's the best practice. We look at the last five years. You know, there's always an outlier, a real mild, mild, we had nothing and it were, it were really low. And then, you have the real high one. And that's kind of, you know, then you look at your three mediums, and that's the best you can forecast.
Yeah.
You know, is there going to be a snow, a snowstorm that'll wallop us? We don't know, right? And, and we just have to look at that and do our best diligence to, to be ready for that.
Sure. But the second part of that, is there a...
A mechanism to fund it?
Yeah, is, so, let's say, you know, next March or January, and that budget line is close to the edge, does the Public Works Director need to come back to council and say, my snow budget's going over, I need another 50,000, or is it just, and we try to find it elsewhere?
Historically, since I've been here, I'm not, so I can't go before that, we have not been bringing departments that have gone over back to. We look at the contingent CPs that's built in the budget. The departments are responsible for their bottom-line budget. So, in theory, if they're going over somewhere, they can look at other places to cut their budget to help offset those in the historical.
I can give you a little example here. So, over the last five years, the values for the cost, 33,845, 7,401, 45,402, 38,282, and 7,820. So, it's quite a big spread, and as low as 7,000 under $500. And so, this year, we're asking for 26,652.
Yeah.
And that's just the best practice.
I get it. I appreciate your attention and forward-thinking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield?
Any bids potentially have gone out for any of the fleet involved? Is that something that's ahead of the game right now before final...
The fleet vehicle?
Yeah, the vehicle, yeah.
Oh, do, I do. I have a proposal for it, and that's how I come up with that value.
Okay.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Take a motion, move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 5, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief? We'll start out with your budget. The 5th, February 5th, is that not to correct me? All right, chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In front of you is the proposed police budget for 2025, represents a 6.65% increase. This is operating cost only with some initiatives, and as we go through the budget, we'll talk about that. Mainly, that'll be in the area of training, Marine Patrol, vehicle purchases, and some evidentiary collection items, inclusive, not only with our detective unit, but also with procurement of our next-gen new RMS system. Let's talk a little bit about the, the work that the Groton City Police Department does. And I broke this down into the annual year as opposed to the fiscal, because fiscal gets a little complicated for some. So, let's talk about the workload that we have first. So, from January to December of 2023, Police Department handled 19,638 calls for service. If you do the math, that's 53.8 calls per day that we handle. We also are, according to the FBI, the number-one police department in Southeastern Connecticut. And number one for me is based on the services that we deliver. And for the best telling number behind that statistic is the solvability rate of the incidents that we are involved with. And we come out at an astounding 62.5% solve rate. The national average is 26%. We leave police departments in the area in our dust when it comes to our solve rate. You also can't argue that we're a smaller jurisdiction, and therefore, that's the reason why we solve so many crimes. That doesn't play. Because if you also look at the FBI statistics, we are the number-one police department in workload per capita. We are equivalent to the same workload that Norwich Police Department experiences. So, given the tools, the personnel, the environment, the culture, and the equipment that we have, I'd say we're doing an outstanding job. As you look through the budget, there are some set figures. The first one is a contract, so anytime you come across personnel costs, it's going to have a 2.25% if it's a contractual employee. For other personnel, there'll be a 3%, that's for a COLA increase. And then, as the Finance Director mentioned in the past, we did add the 5% for the benefits and/or insurance numbers that go along with that. Other than that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions for the chief? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, you alluded to professional development. So, I know that we have reinstituted the dive team. uh, reinstituted the dive team, the water response team, all of that, um, which comes with a cost to do that. Um, can you give us some more details on what your plans are for the professional development? Because your request is going up a hundred and twenty-four percent for that.
Okay, so there's two line items that cover marine patrol. So one is training, uh, and then the second one is the actual marine patrol line item. The training is not specific to marine patrol. That has to do with another initiative, which is CIT. And we'll, we can discuss that, if you'd like, first.
Well, I just want to, if you can talk about why that professional development line needs to go up?
Yeah.
Specifically?
Right.
Are we, are you planning on increasing it just this year? Is it single year initiatives? Is it something that now every year that line is going to be that number to make sure that all of our officers are properly trained? Um, like I said, I kn- I know that we have, um, with CIT and the water response team, we have some initiatives that previously didn't require necessarily this training, um, which costs money to do.
Yes.
Um, and also, have we looked for other funding for those things?
Yes. So let's talk about marine patrol first. So marine patrol is RESF twenty, covered under the marine group for the region. Uh, there is funding available for that, however, it is not open at this time. So the possibility of seeking funds or what we will be allowed to put in for, I can't answer that. Uh, that will not come up until April or May, and then that won't be awarded until October of next year, which is when the funding gets approved. The hundred and twenty-four percent that you're looking at is a mental health initiative, uh, as far as our response is concerned. As you're aware, the Department of Justice, uh, in twenty eighteen, oh, twenty sixteen, rather, came out with pillars. Uh, and one of those was services that you provide to, uh, the community. One of those, now, a subcomponent of that is mental health. Mental health is under national discussion right now because of the, right or wrong, uh, police response to that type of incident. Uh, I know there was discussion with the town last year, and the town actually went out and got, uh, two counselors. And I know there was a discussion as to whether or not the police department or the city would take on a counselor for this year. Uh, having done that program in the past, I can tell you that for two counselors plus equipment vehicles and everything that goes along with it, uh, in Texas, I spent two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for those two individuals. They are not cheap. So, before we undertake that type of obligation, we have to look at what the standing of the police department is as far as its expertise in, uh, dealing with mental illness. And unfortunately, we are not up to standard. Uh, not that we don't do a professional job. What I mean by that is there's accepted training, uh, or expected training, I should say, that is not in place. Um, we are required or should take a CIT training, which consists of forty hours. That's a minimum. Uh, when I looked at the twenty-nine officers, only eight of us had that training. So we need to go and put those officers through the rest of that CIT, CIT training. Uh, on top of that, we stood up the, uh, crisis negotiations. Crisis negotiations is not the same thing as crisis intervention. Crisis negotiations means that the situation has gone bad. We are dealing with possibly a suicidal or barricaded subject, and I need training that is above and beyond CIT with certain individuals in order to open up a narrative with those individuals to hopefully, uh, get that situation resolved and get everybody out without any type of uh, harm being done to either themselves or any of the officers. So we have four officers that are going through CNT training, which is crisis negotiation training. On top of that, we have defensive tactics training. Now, defensive tactics sounds like it's offensive. Okay? Like, we're going to go ahead and put our hands on people. Well, that's what got us in trouble to start with, is putting our hands on people. And causing harm to individuals that necessarily didn't need to have that done. The, the, so, we need a formalized, uh, defensive tactics training. So the one we selected is actually accepted by the Department of Justice Science Department, which is the only one in the country that, uh, has put that on, and that's called the lockup program. So we're going to be putting officers through that. As a matter of fact, two of the officers are going to go for, uh, train the trainer program on that. You asked me about sustainability. There is no sustainability in the area with crisis intervention training amongst any police department. We're going to be the first. We're going to have sixteen hours of sustainability training per year, broken into four hour blocks. So four times a year, we will, uh, give, um, uh, training either in the area of CIT or de-escalation. And de-escalation brings me to my last training initiative, which will be that we send a train to trainer to de-escalation training. So again, we meet a Department of Justice, uh, criteria in that we provide that expertise to our police officers.
Do you want me to continue?
Well, did that answer your question? Do you have any other questions?
Um, well, so, yes, um, so I guess that kind of didn't answer my question about, so this line item is going up?
It's all CIT, ma'am. It's all mental health, has nothing to do with marine patrol on that.
Right, right. So it's going up eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars this year?
Yes, ma'am.
So, do you, does, does next year's budget, is that also going to be thirty-three thousand, six hundred?
No.
Is that your request, or do you expect it to go down?
No, I expect it to go down. The sustainability piece will stay, but the initial cost of sending the people to the forty-hour training or the three weeks of de-escalation in order to do the train the trainer part will, uh, come off that, because then, now, short of a personnel turnover where I have to send somebody, uh, but no, I don't expect that to occur next year.
Okay. Um, next question. Um, I know this isn't like a huge number, but under general support contractual services, it's going up seventy-five hundred dollars, which is almost seven percent. Is that?
What page is that, ma'am?
Uh, that's the same page, it's on page one.
Okay.
Um, it's near the bottom. Is that, is there something in particular that we contract out that you expect an increase in? Or is that just general cost increase that you think is going to occur?
No, so we're going to, under, we're going to have to absorb an increase in the RMS system. So the RMS contract is going to be different than, so NextGen, which is what we're going to undertake, and that comes up later on for a discussion. But NextGen we're going to undertake has a greater cre- uh, greater cost per year than IMC does.
Can you explain what RMC and IMC mean?
So, RMS is Records Management System, all right? So every police department has to have a records management system, because what that does is it collects our data, actually pushes it out to either a prosecutor's office or, and/or the FBI in order to collect data. Um, it's all coded, uh, and we have to use the FBI codes, uh, in that, so that then, uh, they get to capture the data, uh, on a federal level. So, you can't do without it, right? There's no, you're not allowed to do without it. So, currently, we use IMC, um, which is the name of a company that was local, but was bought out by, uh, Central Square, which is now located in Florida, and Central Square is going out of business. They're not going to be in the RMS system anymore for us. The state of Connecticut, uh, collectively, uh, majority-wise, not collectively, but majority-wise, selected, um, NextGen as a replacement. They are a Connecticut-based company. I think that's the reason why, because they're local support. Um, so we looked at them as a vendor as well, uh, and that is the company that was, uh, chosen to go with. It was, uh, NextGen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, uh, another minor thing, but just, um, under postage? It says our postage is going up. Do we, is there some kind of initiative that's going to require more mailings from the police department? Are we?
That's just our standard mailings, and unfortunately, uh, and I wasn't even aware what the cost of a postage stamp was, but it's, uh, it's gone up again. Um, and we exceed what our allotment was for postage, and we expect that to continue.
Okay. Um, and then, there is an increase in special events?
Yes.
Um, do we have, is that?
That's because we went over again in our special events. So there's no time that we've ever been below the allotment as far as special events. Um, the major, now, a lot of that is, uh, the sale fest, uh, the fireworks, et cetera, for that weekend. But, as we get into more community-type events, those special events have to be taken care of as well. So if we get into the basketball or the youth initiatives, uh, that we all are, uh, following, then we have to have some cost coverage that goes with that.
So you're only asking for a small increase that doesn't, isn't even as much as our estimated cost for this year?
Right.
But we have additional events that we are planning. So how do you plan to keep that within the budget?
Yeah, so we're going to have to, uh, so first of all, this potential grant funding as, when it comes to youth sports. And again, that, that would be a very, uh, so we'd have to be more aggressive when it comes to funding sources, going out and finding funded sources. What I had to look at for this priority this year is what initiatives are we looking at that, uh, will be most palatable for both councils, uh, and ones that we can explain? I would love to put this budget up around ten percent, but that's not going to be acceptable for anybody. Um, so I had to pick the priorities this year. Uh, so given the fact that we went over, uh, last year, I, I thought that I wouldn't play with that number too much this year, other than to go out and seek, uh, alternative sources if I can do that. Uh, and then we'll see where we are for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, chief, on the bulletproof vest, I see the, I guess, two, two types of funding sources. Would that also include, I guess, uh, federal money along with the capital reserve money?
So there's BVP, which is the bulletproof vest, or BPV, rather, which is the bulletproof vest grant that comes from the state. That's pretty much automatic if we put in for it. There's also a rifle plate grant, which is a heavier type armor that we can put in for as well. Um, but, th- they are matches, they are not a hundred percent, so we do have to take into consideration what the match was, is going to be.
Anything dabber? I don't.
Any other? Counselor Norris?
Thank you for thinking this through.
You're welcome.
So, first thing I got is, when I look at, what is the difference between trained, this, you've got a training session, a section on page one, professional development? What's the difference between that training, professional development? And this professional development on the next page, top section?
Uh, what are we looking at?
Uh, twenty-one fifteen, dash two, professional development. This year's fourteen thousand, estimated eighteen. Request next year is fifteen.
I am not. I think you're on page two, sir?
Yes, the back of page one.
The back of page one. Um.
It's right on the, right on the full timing, please.
I'm looking at two and three, and I'm not seeing that. Yeah.
Yeah, it's under general support overall, right?
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So that's all on page one for me. Okay, sorry, because I'm like, where's page two? All right, I got you, I got you. Okay. So, professional, okay, so that's two different, um, that's two different, uh, sections for us. So the first one is training for the sworn officers. Okay? The second one is the general support personnel? Okay. No, 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 that's fine.
Let's keep going, because I, I gotta get back to, uh,
Okay.
the deputy mayor was talking about, the postage.
Okay.
Because you've gone up quite a bit in fiscal year twenty-five.
Right.
However, your estimate is pretty much breakeven for twenty-four. So I guess, the question would be, like, so then what else is being mailed?
Yeah, and so the estimate is eight thirty-one to date, so we haven't finished that yet. And again, now we're going to get into our fiscal year, right?
Okay, same question.
Okay.
However, actual for twenty-three was only seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
Yeah, but we spent eight thirty-one so far. And again, not that our volume has increased, it's just that the, the same volume is costing us more money, either through FedEx, UPS, or the, the US Postal Service.
All right, on our page two.
Just give me a section, I'll fuck.
Uh, this is in the still general support, all the way.
Yeah, yes.
Talking about special events, details and supplies. So if I read this, you're going down fifteen thousand dollars. Request for fiscal year twenty-five.
Fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred.
Oh, I see where you're, okay.
Something's not going up?
No, we just didn't spend it, and I don't, I don't foresee us spending that. So we reduced it by fifteen hundred. We're not going to leave numbers where they are. So you're going to go through this, you'll see the minuses, et cetera, right? I'm not going to leave numbers where they are if we didn't use the money. I'm going to put it somewhere else.
And I truly appreciate that.
Right.
I really do. But then, here's a tough question.
Okay.
There will be residents coming here, I guess, at some point when the budget hearing is, I don't know if it's next week or whenever. They're going to ask, what is happening with marine patrol? How much is that costing, and where in this budget is that costing?
Yeah, so that's, that's under marine patrol. Which is marine operations, which is twenty-three, ten, one, one, six, zero, zero, one. That's where it starts.
Yes.
Okay, so that is, you, that's an eight hundred percent increase over the prior budgets.
Could we articulate that, because there may be people that are listening but can't see what we have here?
Yes, so as you are aware, uh, there was a concerned citizenry group that approached the council last year. Um, it had to do with, uh, the increase in boating traffic. They are not wrong. Uh, there has been a return and an increase in the amount of traffic, um, because everybody came out of COVID. And, uh, we like our recreational, uh, aspect of things, so that's what people got back into. Um, unfortunately, though, the two prior years, or the prior years before COVID, sorry, the prior years before this year, when COVID was occurring and at its height, um, that marine patrol budget was not really seriously looked at because there was not very much of a need, other than maybe, uh, an immediate response to, uh, perhaps a search and rescue or another operation that Coast Guard had put on. We tend to, we, we intend to be more, uh, present this year with preventative-type patrols. Uh, in order to do that, uh, we're going to have to put multiple, uh, crews on the boat and be present, uh, every weekend from May through September. Um, that is a vast increase in our salary, uh, expense, and that's a vast increase in our fuel expense, which is where you'll see the two, uh, costs, uh, related to, to that. In addition, uh, I decide, I put the dive team, because the dive team didn't have its own line item, I put the dive team under marine operations. The reason why I did that, again, because the dive team has returned to the water. I think it's important asset to maintain. Uh, and that's an example of that would be, or it, it has been shown to be important, because, uh, as of last month, we've done, uh, uh, two evidentiary dives so far for requesting, uh, police departments. We are the only police department dive team in operation in this area. The closest one to us after us is Willimantic. Um, when it comes to, the reason why it's, it's an important asset to maintain is because no other dive team, and there are fire department dive teams, and they can do search and rescue, and they're great to have in that capacity, but they can't do evidence recovery, because the only thi- the only people that are allowed to do chain of custody and evidence recovery are police officers. So, we have to have a, a police officer aspect to that.
Right. Again, thank you very much for thinking this through. Last area for questions. So, vehicle replacement.
Yes.
I'm looking at this right now, and it looks like you are, your vehicle replacement plan looks like for the next five years, you're looking to take out of service three vehicles and replace them with three vehicles. My only question is, well, first, thank you for thinking this through again. Is that enough vehicles?
So, we're, we have nineteen vehicles in the fleet, all right? The average age is ten point seven, two years. Um, that exceeds what is the industry norm, which is three years. Um, with a five-year replacement, I can get it down to three point two years. So, uh, that's where I plan to go with it. Um, and again, I'm not looking to break the bank. I think you have to be fiscally responsible. Uh, car prices unfortunately have gone up, uh, where we were paying thirty-seven thousand dollars last year, we're going to be paying fifty thousand dollars this year. Okay? Um, that CIP number perhaps is not enough for years three, four, and five, because I can't see where Ford, Chevy, or Dodge are going to go with their manufacturing. All I can tell you is there are increases coming. All I can tell you is there are increases coming, well, I know there's an increase coming this year. Now, we will purchase from the state bid, which we intend to do, so that means we're going to get the best purchase that we can, but there hasn't been a fleet replacement program here. And I'll give you an example of how that affects us. So one of my vehicles is a 2015, and I just invested $9,000 in repairs in it, and it has a book value of $10,300, okay? We can't do that, all right? If you look at our budget for vehicle repair, we're in the $40,000 mark, okay? My goal on this is to reduce that back into the warranties, at least for the major repairs, and that includes the motor and the transmission.
Excellent, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Depot, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. You said that the posted, estimated posted for 2024 is as of today. Are all of the estimated 2024?
No, just that. We can't, I can't tell you what the postage is going to cost us, because I don't know how much mail, packaging, et cetera, that we're going to have to send out. For example, anytime we answer an individual, we have to send that out registered. So we have a receipt of that, so we can put it into the case file. Depending on how many case files we pull, or how many answers we have to give, is how many respondents we have to answer to.
I wasn't asking because of the postage.
No, 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 I understand.
But I'm asking because, so the estimates?
The estimate for that is, that's the best number I could give you up to this time.
But the other estimates are your estimate as of the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
Not as of right now?
No, they're at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that would have been alarming.
No, no, that's the best number, yes, it's what we spent so far, what, in the red, hey?
Just making sure.
No, no.
One of the things that I also talked to all my department heads about was to make sure they just didn't copy paste. And because I knew that has been an issue in the past, and I think you'll be pleased with the budgets that you see coming.
I mean, we may never send out another piece of mail from now until June, but I can't, I don't know what that's going to look like, so.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
In reference to the training, when you said that they get specific certification training, is that, is there certain certifications that need to renew every year or every three years, just, or, and is that within the budget, or how is that?
Right, so there's no obligation under CIT to renew. We're going to do that as initiative, I think it's very important. So, along with CIT and that type response, de-escalation is the other key phrase or the key term that keeps coming up, but we don't have a plan, or there wasn't a plan prior to this, to do a de-escalation training. So what we're going to do is we're going to do three CIT maintenance trainings and one de-escalation training, so we'll have the four training sessions per year.
And my other one is just a, your school crossing guard.
Hmm.
Where specifically are the school crossing guards? That, you're talking in front of Thames River, correct?
Correct, and that's it.
That's it.
So, we used to have the two, the special traffic as well, but we're going to eliminate that position, because right now it's not filled anyway. And again, I can take that money and use it elsewhere in the budget, so. And we end up by doing the traffic anyway if they request it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting February 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, that's the budget, we'll move on to accept the NSEP grant.
So the NSEP grant was an amount of $33,752. Last year, prior to my arrival, there was a discussion on using the NSEP funds for the evacuation route cameras. You can see that some of those are up, the largest one is right here in front of it, right next to the town hall on Clarence B. So far, they've proven very useful, so this grant will be used to put the next two locations in, and I believe that's the next line item. But that's, we're going to ask you to accept it first, and then we'll go ahead and discuss it in the next line item, and tell you where we're going to put those.
So the first thing we have to do is get you guys to accept, get the council to accept the NSEP grant, and then the next resolution will be for using NSEP grant for camera purchases. Any questions on the NSEP grant? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Well, I guess I'll ask this now, so we have one camera up that we used, two that we used NSEP funds for before.
Correct.
And this will provide for one more?
Two more.
Two more?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, do we have plans for additional cameras? What is our?
We have one more after that. So we have five total locations.
Okay.
Yes.
So is the plan to then apply again next year for this grant?
So the NSEP is a nuclear safety program, so because we are a residential municipality within their area of operations, that, again, that's a pretty regular funding source for us. Now, doesn't mean it can't change next year, we don't expect it to, though, and we haven't been alerted to that, so I would expect the same funds to come available next year.
So we just look at the map right over here, the NSEP, this is Millstones in the center, and so all the surrounding towns, that's where the NSEP money comes from, it's nuclear money.
Yeah.
Any, do you have another?
Yes.
Can you please?
So, once we get all of the cameras, do you have an idea for other potential items that might fall under that, that would help you control your budget a little bit, maybe?
So there are expenses that are not covered in the budget, such as our EMD-type needs, which the NSEP grant could then be used for. One of those I would look to do is, does our EOC, this area, meet the usage needs that we would require in an emergency? It's not what I've seen before as far as facilities are concerned, so I would probably look to use, not probably, I would definitely look to use the NSEP to increase our capabilities here for the next time around.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the NSEP grant? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council, February 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, excuse me, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the NSEP grant for camera purchases?
So the next two locations will be covered under the grant funding that you've just approved. One of those will be placed at the entrance way, and again, these camera placements are looking to cover potential evacuation routes, so that we can put boots on the ground if we need to, as far as mitigation strategies are concerned. One of those is going to be at the five corners, that's an important intersection for us, obviously. And then the second one is actually going to be placed down at Yukon, with two directions, it'll look at the beach, and it'll look at the Yukon entrance. This way, we can see any events that are occurring, limited, but any events that are occurring next to the entranceway to Avery Point, or we can look to see any events that are occurring at the beach. You brought up flooding before, this will actually give us real-time coverage of what that flooding may look like down in that area.
Questions, Councilor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, speaking of that, then, are, is the, have we thought about coordinated access for the Public Works Director for those cameras, then? Because they will be the one deploying maybe Public Works trucks if there's some kind of weather event or emergency event, will they have easy access to, I mean, I suppose they can just walk down to the police station and get?
Yeah.
But has that discussion been had? It just made me think of, like, that may be another department that could use access to that information.
Yeah, but if we have it at dispatch, dispatch can radio them and let them know.
The problem is, it's not IP, it's what they call Cradle Point, which is a software carrier that you have to have in place. In fact, one of the issues we had initially with the camera locations is we couldn't get the Cradle Point connection to work. Eventually, they got that sorted out. So right now, it terminates, it all terminates at dispatch as our 24-hour, seven-day-a-week person that is monitoring what that situation looks like.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield?
Yes, Chief, I guess there'll be an excess from the 33, 752 to 24, 665. What would the excess be utilized for?
We haven't just set a, a project on that yet, sir. We were just trying to get this done. There is a chance that it may be, there may be a, and again, like I said before, there was a difficulty with Cradle Point. I don't know what that connectivity is going to look like, as far as any kind of problems are concerned, so the first thing I would use it for is towards any additional costs as far as that's concerned, because the primary is to get these cameras up and running, and then if there's something left, then I'll come back to council and say, this is how much we have left, and this is what I like.
It's also used for the EMD stipend.
Oh, there you go.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council, meeting February 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Next gen, ARPA redistribution?
So, the police department was given $270,000 out of the ARPA funding. The majority of that was to be spent on Next Gen, and again, that's our records management system, at a cost of $202,000. When we actually purchased Next Gen, it came in at a reduced-cost discount price of $189,000, so we had a savings there. One of the other major items that was approved by council at that time was the purchase of tasers. Tasers was at $47,000. And again, we came in under cost at that because, or actually, we had a savings of $47,000, but we did come in under cost, not that we didn't buy tasers, but we bought them from a different supplier, not from Taser Direct, and we didn't buy the most recent Taser, so that, there's a huge cost savings of about $1,300 per unit if you do that. Every officer now does have their own assigned Taser, so there are 30 of them in inventory currently. But what I, what I need to do is look at re-appropriating that. Now, when the discussion comes about Next Gen, Next Gen is a huge undertaking for us, because we have to move data, existing data, from one source to another. That requires storage and infrastructure that, at the initial time of conversation, was not put into that $202,000 allotment. There was talk about it, but it wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't move forward for whatever reason. However, now I have a chance to do that. I should point out that if I don't do it here, if that allotment is not permitted, that I will have to put that into the general budget, because we can't move forward with Next Gen without the support, and that is connectivity, licensing, and storage. Those are the three major items. Now, we are lucky enough to be able to contract with our own IT department, and the reason why that's important for us is because I don't have to go out and find eight different vendors to do this for me. One IT department can coordinate for me, and then bill me on the cost of the amount of that infrastructure. So the amount that you're seeing that we're requesting is the work that IT has already done as far as them going out and contacting these vendors. The other thing I should tell you is that none of that is a labor charge. So we're only talking about material, because IT will do the labor on this, which saves us a huge amount. So we're looking at adding the infrastructure amount to the ARPA, but even then, it doesn't go outside of the original allotment. All I'm doing is trying, is taking from two different line items, well, one of them was already approved for that purpose, but taking from another line item that I purposely went for a cost savings on, and then putting that into a need that I saw as far as support is concerned, for an RMS system that we have to have.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So I just want to make sure that I have, that I understand this. So we allocated how much money under ARPA for the Next Gen system?
202.
And what was the actual cost of that?
189.
And then we allocated how much for the tasers?
62 and change, don't have that, right in front of me, hold on. $60,570.
And you only, and the actual cost for that was?
$13,283.
And that was because we got grant funding for the tasers?
No, it's because we selected a different model Taser than the one that originally was proposed. It's a cheaper cost to us, but it doesn't mean that our capabilities were eroded at all, it's just a different model Taser, as far as its vintage is concerned.
So how many tasers was that?
Thirty.
That just seems like such a huge cost.
It is, but it goes from $1,700 down to $450 bucks.
Okay, so the Next Gen system, what you put in the ARPA request, are you saying that there was additional work that you didn't foresee in switching over to the Next Gen system?
So my conversations with IT, that was, first of all, I wasn't here when that discussion took place, but when IT or that proposition came up, there was discussion, and for some reason, that was not undertaken at that time. It doesn't mean that it wasn't needed, it was just not funded.
So, the amount now, so what that does is makes, instead of 202,000 to switch to the Next Gen system, it's costing us $250?
Roughly, probably around $260, I believe.
So if you had prepared that proposal, you would have put it in the ARPA request for more money?
I would have put the complete proposal in, top to bottom, only because I think that's fair and transparency-wise, but again, you know, understanding from IT, that conversation did take place, nothing was hidden, it just, for whatever reason, was not funded. I can't answer why.
No, 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 I'm not asking that. So the, my other question is, so you said that the cost that we're contracting with IT is non-labor cost?
Correct.
What is that?
It's material and/or licensing. So licensing is in several areas, so it's what they call either sequel licensing or licensing per user, depending on how many individuals we have accessing that system.
So the quote for $202,000 for Next Gen didn't include our licensing?
It did not.
And, and again, I know you didn't do that.
Right.
But, so IT is not charging us for labor?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, no, they made, so there was a meeting between the financial director, IT, and the mayor, and myself, when this initially came up for discussion, and that was emphasized at that time, is that because we're contracting with our own in-house IT company, that labor would not be part of that.
Okay.
In addition, that the total expenditure will not exceed?
Correct.
The total allotment to the police.
We are not going to go outside our 270 allotment, no.
I thought that I directed to give you guys an updated spreadsheet tonight, that's not in your packet, so obviously, either I didn't give the direction, or we didn't get there yet. But I'll give you an updated spreadsheet on what we authorized, what the quotes were, what the actuals are, and where we are. So I'll make sure that you guys have that.
Okay, so, well, I know that we don't have that yet, but your three items that were on the ARPA were the Next Gen, the tasers, and premium pay?
Yes.
Was your premium pay, was the actual cost of the premium pay what was in the proposal?
Yeah, that was a stipend, it was a set amount, so it wasn't based on hourly or...
So that didn't go up or down?
No, that was just what was allotted for that.
Okay, I just want to check, so the only cost variance were for Next Gen and the tasers?
Yes, but, and then again, I made that conscious decision, because I knew, so in initial conversation, when I first got here, we started talking about Next Gen, we had to find money somewhere, so that made the most sense, given that Next Gen was already a line item of discussion under ARPA and a line item of allotment, it made sense to try and save money within that whole package to then still use on the Next Gen program.
Okay, and I, you know, I think that makes sense, because otherwise, we'd have to put that in our budget for next year.
It would have to go in, I'd have to, otherwise, we can't stand up our RMS.
Right, which is already an increase, obviously, so, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. And thank you for, I think, you know, saving on the tasers, so that we can not have to stick the additional cost in our, in our regular budget, makes sense, because I think that would probably give us trouble getting that approved.
Yeah, and again, we're not losing, we didn't lose any capability, we just got an old o- Yeah, and again, we're not losing, we didn't lose any capability, we just got an old model. It works, it uses the same technology. It doesn't have some of the bells and whistles that some of the newer units have, but we don't need it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, yes, now with that savings, now of 13,283, and that's ARPA money, correct? Alright, so that money will still stay with, with the police as far as utilizing something else with that extra? Or is that going to go to potentially something different within ARPA? I figure Ron might know better, but...
Yeah, we, so we're going to stay within the three line items that we had because outside of that, and again, conversations with the mayor, outside of that, we would have to go back to council for re-appropriation of a new project completely that nobody has discussed in the past.
And my next question, I guess, with the data processing up 50, almost 57%, would some of that could be utilized for the expenditures for the data processing piece of the budget?
So that's the annual maintenance cost.
Okay.
So the annual maintenance cost has risen so that we have to meet that. Now, that will be a reoccurring cost that we have to absorb every year. But the, obviously, the ARPA expense for the support is not something that's reoccurring.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 5th, 2024.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, the last one is accept St. John's Christian Church donation.
This is a donation in the amount of $300. We're going to use it for our youth education programs. That's where it will go. That's what it's already earmarked for upon your approval.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
It says it's for the purchase of backpacks?
Yeah, that's youth education.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Yeah, no, that's where it's going to go.
Are we doing another backpack distribution?
We will, yes, ma'am.
Do we know when that's scheduled? Like in the next couple months, six months? Is that for the summer?
When is our next backpack event?
Probably not until after the, yeah, school program in July slash August.
So it's for the one in the summer?
We usually have two, so we'll run the, we'll run the big one, like we usually do, and then we went over to farmer's market and had it there as well as a second event, and ended up by any surplus that we had from the first one went during the second one, so. It's back to school.
And, can I make one more?
You still have the floor.
Um, well, I just wanted to comment, you know, just want to thank St. John's is always helping, helping us help the community and, you know, they allow us to use their parking lot for the food box distribution, and I just want to say thank you to them for, for always helping, helping us help people.
Yeah, we have a great relationship with them. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of February 5th, 2024.
So moved, second.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Director Gade?
You sat?
Yep, go ahead. Uh, the first one is Trimble Energy Software Price Correction.
Last time I was up here, we talked about Trimble. Trimble is our OMS system, which is our operations management system. It indicates meters self-report when they're out, and we can look at maps of the outages and where they are. We actually put the action item through with a mistake. It had a $5,000 mistake. It was for 51,93140 instead of 55,93140. This is a retraction and a reinstitute, just to correct the price.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Was, was it a typo or were we not working off, because it's an invoice?
It was a typo.
So the invoice came in, was the action item form... Was the action item form also incorrect?
Uh, last month, yeah, it was actually typed in wrong. You'll see that this action form was put in by Maureen. Maureen wrote it and I missed it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Maureen wrote the resolution?
Okay.
And the action item, and I missed it.
And it was just a typo?
Normally, we check in the last numbers in the number, not the first number. And when we went to pay it, we, I was, I went through as I was proofing it before I signed it, and I go, oops.
So have we put in a check in place or to prevent that from happening in the future?
Yeah, I just have to look at it twice, and actually, Maureen felt really bad because we don't like to waste time here.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Sheffield?
What was that dollar figure to be rescinded?
Uh, it was 51,93140. The new number is 55,93140.
Counselor Norris?
The only question is, um, so that increase, so to speak, is covered? Or do we need to find money somewhere else?
No, it was budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 5th, 2024.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Aluminum residuals removal?
At the water filtration plant, um, the water is clarified using a process where the dissolved aeration flotation filters actually move the dirt to the surface. It is skimmed off, and it actually is moved to residual drying basins. Routinely, every year, we have to take that residual, residual dirt and, which is an inert substance, and move it to a drying basin on the watershed. We've been trying to make an attempt to move those residuals to a recycler that actually mixes it with soil and uses it for plantings. They actually sell it, so they'll mix it and it could become a fertilizer. We put out bids to do two things. One, to remove it from the basins and transport it to our drying site. And we also, in the same bid, put bids out to remove it and, for beneficial use. We didn't get any bids for beneficial use, including the carrier that we used last year, Synagro, to do that. But we did get two bids to remove and transfer it to our drying beds. So we, this recommendation is to award to the low bidder, and we decided to do it in a bid for three years because we have, this is routine and is what operations does. So this is what the recommendation is.
Questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So when you were saying that the Synagro did not come back up with the bid, was there a reason for that?
Synagro, we talked about this a little bit internally. They bring it to one place, ERC, where they actually do this work. At times, they're so busy, they don't have any more capacity. And I guess the way the bid was written, they couldn't guarantee that they could always move it there. So they couldn't make any commitment to us. So therefore, they decided not to bid. It's a, it's a, it's a new kind of thing. It would be preferred because we don't want to keep it on site because someday we'll have to move it. But we're not in immediate threat over the next five to 10 years of running out of space for it. But it is a work in progress where we want to improve the process.
So when it goes to the drying beds, it sits there?
Right, it sits there. It gets pretty dry in the summer. And actually, when it's dry, it might be able to be moved cheaper. So we've really got to look at that whole process.
And the company that was, are there still in development of using it as a so-called fertilizer or soil for plants? Is that, they're still in process or they're already up and running? And there's not a reason why they've moved to actually take this?
It, it's just because it's, I think it's materials handling intensive, so there's not a lot of places that do it. You also need to have the correct permitting. And in the future, we do not know where the permitings go as they keep looking at what's in the residuals more and more and more.
And the dry beds, are they contained within a building?
No, they're just on the watershed, right? Actually, anyone that wants to go for a tour of the watershed anytime, it might be better when it's a little warmer. But we, we will drive you by and actually show you. In the summer, it's very dry, it just looks like a pile of dirt.
So when that happens, and it's in there and it's dry, so is there chance, I would imagine, like if it stirred by anything, that it actually, could actually raise up in the air? Or it doesn't do that, or is it too heavy?
It can blow in the dust. It can get dusty and blow, just like dirt would.
But it lays down fast because of aluminum, or it floats around for a while?
No, it's just a light dirt. It can blow.
Okay, thank you.
And, but we are permitted to put it where we put it, and that is all by state permit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, once the work begins, starting, I guess, upon...
It'll probably start after the freeze is over and the drying beds are not ice anymore.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 5th, 2024.
So, second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. A Wright Pierce Engineering Grant?
The Wright Pierce Engineering Grant and the next one, LIG OLDC Grant for Electric. First, I'm going to talk about the Wright Pierce, which is water, but they're both for the same purpose. The Office of Local Defense Community Corporation gave the Southeast Council of Governments a grant in our name for us to do a study that looks at, well, us to improve the water reliability to the subbase. The grant also is for us to improve electrical reliability in distribution to the subbase. It also is for Eversource to look at natural gas reliability to the base. So the first part of this is for Wright Pierce, who is a, we have a master service agreement with, which is to look at the water pipe on Military Highway right along the riverfront and create the design so that we have a shovel-ready project to replace that water line as a backup feed to the subbase, which is also a feed out that way toward Legerd. So it has multiple purposes for us, but it definitely does increase the subbase's reliability. The grant requires a 10% match. The utility is matching via labor, so it's using internal costs, and we're going to bill our labor out to CCOG, and we will be reimbursed after that 10% match has been satisfied. The labor match that we're giving is more than 10%, so we will be receiving funds to fund the labor also.
Okay, questions on the Wright Pierce Engineering Grant? Take, hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of February 5th, 2024.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. LIG OLDCC Grant for the electric.
The second part of that grant is to increase electrical liability, reliability to the subbase, and this project is to create the design for a shovel-ready project to replace the 34.5. We have, um, the normal distribution on the streets is 13,800 volts. The subtransmission system that feeds our very large customers in substations is 34,500 volts. So we call that subtransmission. There's a direct line express feed from Buddington Substation to the subbase metering station. It's about four miles long, and we call that line the 325 line. The goal is to replace those wires and any poles that are needed to put a brand-new feed that will have tree wire, and if a tree falls on it, it won't trip off or trip the subbase off. Replace that line all the way. Uh, it's about four miles.
So one of the things that we just recently finished, there's one, one item that's left that'll get done in July, but the Buddington Substation, we just finished the, uh, the resiliency upgrade. It increases the resiliency, the capacity capability of all the wires. And so now, that substation has always provided a base. This will give an updated wire to the subbase. Any questions? Counselor Piazza?
I just had a general one. It's, um, excuse me if it's off. So, uh, the Buddington Substation there, so we run a lot of buses through there. There was a wire hanging down, but it was reddish. Could you tell me what that actually is? Is that something? Yeah, it was reddish, hanging straight down and blowing in the wind. It didn't seem to be live, but we called it in, but I just wanted to know if that's, you know, just for educational sake, because everybody was like freaking out about it. And I was like, I wonder if it was just kind of like a general... It looked reddish, pinkish, kind of just hanging from the wire. It could be Xfinity for all I know. I don't know if it was some electrical or not.
I don't know. We'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of February 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Brandikey Tower Maintenance?
A couple of years ago, we put through a, um, a bond which included the replacement of Brandikey Tank. We've been working fairly consistently on this project. The Brandikey Tank is 77 years old, and during that time, it's been recoded twice. We anticipated that we would need to replace that tank. And we were, are, we were in our, in the future, looking for property to eventually replace that tank. However, the engineering study to date has determined that that tank can be refurbished and recoded one more time and have a life of approximately another 25 years. So this, um, this action item is to award Wright Pierce, who we have an MSA with, the design to get us ready to bid, the refurbishment of that tank.
Any questions or comments on this? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So even though it's going to be refurbished and you're looking for another place to put it, maybe down the future, is that the same amount of property that needs, that it sits on now, or would it be larger?
Uh, right about the same.
Right about the same. Any ideas about where? Does it have to be close to where it is now, or it can be?
Ideally, it would be a plot fairly close to where it is now. Generally, the plot of land where you put a tank is big enough to have two with a lay-down area. So you actually rebuild, you build the tank, and then when you need a new one, you build another one next to it, you take that tank down, and you just keep going back and forth over the eons.
And no ideas about in the future what, where it would actually be?
Uh, there's several properties. There's a property that we were looking to buy that is kind of, I'll call it, I don't know, is it streetlocked or it's in the woods right behind it? We'd like to buy that someday.
But I reached out to the owner, and the owner wasn't interested at this time.
Gotcha.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you. Okay, the supporting documentation that we have for this item, under action item, is, is not the correct form? It is the...
I stated that, sorry, Deputy Mayor. I stated that in the email that I sent to you.
Okay.
And that's when I sent out separately the new, the new form.
So, yes.
Okay, just making sure.
I am saying that to make, so I went back to the meeting where we got the action item form for the original Trimble, and that is incomplete. The price isn't even on the action form. And these action forms that we have tonight, they don't have the date submitted at the top, they don't have the department. And these action forms that we have tonight, they don't have the date submitted at the top, they don't have the department, there's information missing. So to my question that I asked before, which is, did we put something different in place to make sure that the pricing discrepancy doesn't happen again? Not only that, in my opinion, these forms should be complete. I don't understand why there's no date submitted, there's no department on it, there's no date of the utilities commission meeting. I mean, why have a form if we're not going to use it? So, the form, if completed, maybe would have caught that error, so.
This was the original form that was sent, sorry.
But not, not, it, this has nothing to do with this particular form.
This is in general.
In general, looking at all of the action forms out of the utility department, I went back and pulled my notes from the meeting from the original Trimble one and that action item form is also incomplete and incorrect. So, I guess my request is, if we're going to use these forms.
I agree.
They should be complete and I have made this observation before. So this is very frustrating to me that we're still getting incomplete forms from the utility. And I know that it might not seem like a big deal that the date submitted is not at the top, but this doesn't tell me when this was initiated, when it went to the utility commission. So I have to go read the resolution to get that information. Why is that, why is there space for it on the form if we're not using the form? And like I said, going back and looking at the one from, it was in November, December, I think, when we got it. I think it was at our December 4th meeting, maybe. It doesn't have, I'll pull it up. It has the date submitted and administration, it says it was, request was initiated by you. It has no purchase amount on that action item form. So, had it had that information on it, maybe we would have caught that error of the 51 instead of the 55 in the resolution, but it was incomplete. So I just wanna make the observation that this isn't one error one time. It seems to me that these action item forms aren't being completed properly.
Uh, right, I mean, at one point, we, I created the action item form with Noemi at the time. Uh, and the form's only two years old at this point. So then it got bequeathed to Maureen and we will go through the forms ahead of time and fill it out. What happens on some of them is for administrative ones, they were, I believe they were getting filled out after the fact. So, the, because it, it's used as a cover sheet just to put a package together when actually the thing that got written first, uh, especially in Trimble, would have been the resolution and the action item. So it, it, it actually is done just to create a package so that we can sit there and give you, you something that makes sense, right? But we can go through and make sure that it's all correct before it, before it-
So for example, the, the Trimble one, the original one we got in December, had your signature at the bottom with no pricing on it at all. So, why would you sign something that's clearly incomplete? And I, I understand an error going through admin-
Because I never, I never, i- the invoice was never given to me, I was told we needed to put an action item in, so I, actually, Maureen gave it to me right before the meeting, I signed it. And then um, I didn't actually get to see that, that invoice until, like, when we put the utility commission package together. But we, we can get a little more organized in the way we put that together.
Well, we should, I think we should review our process, cuz if I heard you correctly, this doesn't really mean anything cuz you put the package together and you throw this on as a cover sheet. So if this is not being used as part of the process, what good is it and why would we use it?
Well, because it's come up here several times and it's, believes it's a form that the council likes, so.
Not if it's incomplete.
But that's why, it's something that's getting done after the fact to try to put a complete package together. But it actually, w- when you take a look at it, we tried to put a couple of the important elements that are written in the uh resolutions and the action items.
All right, hold on, I got it. So, to the Deputy Mayor's point. We, the council is assuming that this is an official form and that it means something. If, if that's the case, that means all field, fields should be filled out, there should be no blanks. It should be reviewed, it should be accurate and it sh- this should match what's on here. There have been mult- there, there have been more than one instance this night where that's not the case. So we need to go back and look at the process.
We will do that, sir.
Can I make one more point?
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I find it alarming that y- you would sign something that's completely incomplete. Like, I don't understand why that makes sense. Someone presents you with a document and says, "I'm gonna fill this in later, will you please put your signature on it?" The answer should be no. I don't have an issue with that procedure.
Counselor Sheffield?
Is this form a required document for this process or, again, is it just informational uh for us to review? Is it required to be part of ruling on a motion?
It's not part of the purchasing policy.
Okay.
That, that's correct, right?
R- right, we, we tried to do it for organizational purposes, just to-
Okay.
It is a good talking, talking.
Right, so it's not a required that we have to, ha- that you have to have it in here?
No, Noemi and I made it.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor, so I'm looking at the forms and it says create it November 1st, 2022, you had said a couple of years, so I'm imagining, um, I've run into this when I work for the state, so you get these new forms, 20,000 things that run through. So on one side, on the graceful side, we have, we have had, run into the same problem. But I do understand Deputy Mayor's thing, so, but if also too, it's not something that needs to be totally, it's just informational. But what, how many times has this actually happened and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I heard you say that we're usually using this because it, uh, the council at one time wanted to see something like this to kind of get an idea. Is that the reason it came into creation?
We actu- we actually invented the form so that we'd have a cover page and something to send over to the clerk's office so that it would separate the packages.
I see.
Because they get, we, we, we look at, we got seven different resolutions.
Right.
And when we sent a bunch over with backup, it just made sense to clip a package together where one goes right after another and it actually says on it up at the top just what the company is and if there's a quote, it fits right with the resolution.
Right, so I'm, so I see it's created, so this is not a revision, so create it, so not, it's, it's, it's just over a year old. Uh, so I'm assuming that the oversight, that it gets completed and if this is just gonna be informational or how how um, I wanna say, complete this would be, especially for council purpose, that, that you will do the oversight and that, is that what I'm understanding? That that, or you're gonna look into the oversight that these are completed quickly?
I'm gonna have the utility review their process.
Okay.
How we do that, then we're, then the director can report out to the council.
Okay. Sounds good.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanna add one more thing, I do like these action item forms, they are a good summary. My thing is the premise that is just an additional thing, so its accuracy is not necessarily prioritized or um, again, in my opinion, making the observation, that is part of what led to not catching the mistake on the Trimble item, which, as we've discussed before, coming back repeatedly to the council to amend motions because there was a simple mistake is frustrating. And that would have been caught had that form been complete because in order to put the price on that form, the person would have gone to the purchase order and looked and noticed that the price was different on the purchase order than it was on the resolution in order to complete the action item form. So that mistake maybe wa- wouldn't have been made.
Any other questions or comments on the Brandigie tank? Counselor Norris?
I do like that form, thank you very much, when it's done accurately. I'm not gonna lay this totally on your feet, cuz I'm assuming when we get this packet it's been through a couple of eyes and hands, so that when we get this as a council member, it's been verified. So I'm not gonna lay this totally on your feet, but it would help if you did have a little, but it's not just you. There's a whole procedure issue that maybe uh needs some revisiting, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of February 5th, 2024.
So moved, second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Electric Tower Maintenance?
Um, when you dot, drive down uh 95 north or south, we have a couple of our subtransmission lines that cross the highway. On either side of the highway, we have an electric tower. The electric tower is metal, it's held up with a cement foundation. These towers were put up in the mid 60s, 60s and we did a bid to solicit maintenance for the cement footings that hold the towers up. The goal of the maintenance is to uncover um a little bit of the cement, inspect it and then recode it to seal any cracks so that water won't penetrate into it in the future. Initia- uh, the engineer that looked at it said they're structurally sound and only need to be maintained on the part that's above ground, underground is fine. It's just structural at that point. So this is, uh, uh, we bid it, two bids were received, uh, low cost was to, to Relo to do that maintenance.
Any questions or comments, Counselor Sheffield?
Now, where's the location is on I-95, you know, the-
It, it's rate, if you look at I-95 and you look where Buddington Substation is.
Mm-hmm.
It's like, it's like exactly 90 degrees, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 5th, 2024.
So moved, second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, Power Tech Associates?
Um, further, uh, talking about 34.5 subtransmission system, one of the substations that is fed, which is a customer-based substation, is the Wyman Gordon Substation. That substation uh is 1960s vintage and is gonna be updated from an older voltage up to 13.8, which is the current uh distribution system voltage. In order to do that, we have to buy some new metering cabinets and this is the price for the three metering cabinets to meter the power into that substation. Uh, it was not bid because it's a preferred vendor, we use one type of meters that uh feeds into our metering system.
Any questions or comments on this uh motion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Sir?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, thank you Director Kanae.
Thank you, Ron.
Mary?
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, we'll start out with New Beach and Parks application.
I can't speak to this one cuz I haven't seen an applica- I got the application and gave it to the city clerk cuz they go through that process, so I don't, I don't have it.
Okay.
I know we got an application, came through.
We have an application for Benjamin Moore's off of uh Eddie Westwood Drive.
Sorry.
Do you have the application and his resume in front of you? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor, um, general question. How many vacancies do we have on Beach and Parks right now?
One.
Just the one, so this will-
This would fill the committee to nine.
Okay. I just wanna say from looking at the um resume and the application, um, this person is a Navy veteran, which I think is great ad. You know, we have a lot of Navy vets, so I think it's always good to have that kind of perspective. Um, also, they have some hazmat training, which might be of good use on Beach and Parks considering the events we do, the, you know, things we deal with. Seems to me like this would be a good addition to the, to the committee and I think, you know, good to keep the Beach and Parks committee full.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments on this motion? This item rather. Counselor Norris?
If I look at this, this individual is a Republican. So I would like to say-
Okay.
Good for conversation around the table when we have a good mixture of uh ideals.
We do, we, one of the things we try to do is we try to keep a, a balance. Sometimes we're not able to keep that balance because when I have vacancies, I send it out to both parties' chairs and say, hey, I need help, and then I go out and start beating bushes. And it's more important to me that I get good quality people uh on boards and commissions than it is what party they're with. I also need to make sure that we can maintain a quorum. So that's always a, always a good thing as well. Any other questions or comments on this application? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor, um, on the second question, why would you like to serve on the board? He just said he's not involved in any, do, does, do we know or is there any info on why he was actually interested in this committee per se? I mean, his, his experience is-
He may have, he may have children, I'm not sure. I mean, one of the things is if he's retired, and it appears that he is, uh, or actually, he could be, still be active due-
It seems like he's active according to this, yeah.
Maybe he feels that this is, I don't know, uh, you know, he doesn't say here. It could be a good place for him to start, he's gonna ha- he's gonna live here, you don't know how long he's lived, well, actually, we do. So if you look at his resume, he's with the EOD before this. So, he's at Naval Support Facility, Dive Facility. He was in San Diego before that, he was in San Diego for a long time, it looks like he got sent up here, like he am.
Yeah, cuz it dates all the way back to May 2000 for Hawaii.
Yep, so.
And I was just looking at his education, so I was looking, you know, just like to find the interest. So he has a pending American History Bachelor's coming up. But I was just, I didn't know, so the process is they fill in the application and what's the process? When somebody fills it out, where does it go from there? Do they actually have a, a quick interview phone-wise or personally?
And then they evaluate, the department head evaluates it and then we bring it to council.
It, it goes to the city clerk's office? And then if it's shared with us as a department head? If not, I know we were looking for new members, so this might have gotten facilitated quickly. I like the fact that he has some dive experience and with the, the water and the beach might actually even s- move towards something with helping the, working with the police department, so it kind of gets his foot in the door.
Mm-hmm.
So, just looking at this right now.
So it goes to the, the city clerk first and then it goes to the department head, is that what I understood? Yes, no?
This one was handed to me by the department head.
It came to, it came into the blue box out front, said Parks and Recreation, I opened it, it was this front page and I brought it to the co- to the city clerk, cuz that's where it says to deliver.
And so then it just comes to us for approval, is that how it goes? So there's no formal, like, okay, so we just read this, there's no formal uh interview on, call or anything personal with the person at all?
Well, I think it's up to the department head, sometimes they call him, sometimes they don't.
Okay.
If the paper looks like there's somebody that, that uh, that they would want on their committee, then they go with it and bring it to the council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to add to that, I think in the past, if there's, I think sometimes we treat advisory committees different than, for example, planning and zoning is a very technical committee. So I think the council in the past has had the person come to a council meeting and been able to interview them. I, I think that we, we can- I, I think that we, we can if we wanted to request that. But generally, in my experience, it's been that advisory committees, we go based on the um director of the department's advice and on the paper information if they aren't able to make a city council meeting. Um, me personally and in experience, when it's more a technical committee like planning and zoning, we do do a little more digging and interviewing because it requires a different type of expertise.
So I agree. The Planning and Zoning, Zoning Board of Appeals, those are set up by the Connecticut General Statutes, and therefore they have uh, they have requirements that they have to meet as far as their actions and times and, and what they're charged with doing, as opposed to Vision Parks tends to be uh an advisory committee. Any other questions? Councilor Piazza?
Just to comment on that. So what I'm understanding is just kind of, this is very informal, just how it, it runs. I mean, I understand the technicality of it, and we have had people come who were interested in the board, but there's nothing written per se how the, it goes. So basically, it is handed in. The director basically looks at it and says, uh, yes, this person, you know, and we, on it's an advisory board. They're interested, looks good, so we're gonna move it along. That's basically informally. That's how it rolls.
Any other question or comments? And I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February fifth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion of the second. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, motion carries. Okay, Memorial Bench Application?
So, this is, so the Beach and Parks Committee uh reviews the, the resolution that was put in place. Initially, it was in oh-five, and then it was revised in twenty nineteen for the memorial benches, trees and, and pavers. And over the, so last fall, they kind of fell into, they kind of dug into this a little deeper because we just get, sometimes we get, we get a piece of paper with notes on it. We get a, a business card with a request. So they wanted to kind of formalize the request process of submittal for a, a memorial, whether it be a bench, a tree, or a paver. So they worked due diligently on an application process, but they said it's a change to the resolution that was approved in April of nineteen. I'm here tonight to share with you their application and the change of language that would revise the um resolution from twenty nineteen, April. They just think this way, we have something to actually give in the packet to the, to the council when somebody's uh requesting some, uh, one of the memorials to be placed in the city. So um, this is what was, this is what was finalized, uh, I believe it was back in October. I'm just getting it to you guys now because we started right into rules and regulations, and it kind of got lost in the shuffle. But this is what they'd like to uh propose to add to that submittal process for um memorials in the city.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So I love the idea of formalizing the process, and I do think because now we've got, we've got the pavers and potentially trees and all of that. So I do think that is a good idea. Um, I think some of the language in both the resolution and the application maybe should be reviewed. I, it has a um specific uh requirement that the memorial be for an individual who's made a significant contribution to the city of Groton community. I don't, you know, I'm not sure what the conversation was around that, but that's very subjective. So I have concerns as to what that entails, what that review entails. I think in, in my opinion, that's too subjective for that to be the requirement. Um, I think that it might be appropriate to refer this to the council, Beach and Parks, or Parks and Rec Committee. Um, so that, that committee can maybe review the details and um
Okay.
I I think if that's the case, if it gets referred to that committee, then I'll reserve my additional comments for that conversation.
I will refer to the twenty, the two thousand and five when this initially came about this. I wasn't here then, but the language stated they had to be, they had to be like on a committee. Their involvement had to be something within the city. So it, it, and it was very specific. It detailed, it said committees, council, Beach and Parks. And it's, they kind of tried to pull away from that a little bit, so it wouldn't be that specific. But we can definitely, once we get through the rules and regulations of the beach, we could definitely revisit this. But they were trying to keep it a little, the initial oh-five resolution stated some of the involvement that they had to have to, in order to get a bench. Now, I will share with you, the committee over the years has not followed that guideline. And um, unfortunately, I don't have the twenty nineteen language. Um, I was hoping she would have cut and paste, you know, like cut out what was removed. But um, but yes, we can, I mean, if you want to take it to the committee of the council, that's fine. I could be bringing it back to the committee.
Also, in the future, when you bring documents, you could bring them and track changes.
Well, that's why I just thought, I thought she'd done that. I thought Val had done that, so I will make sure that that's uh
That would be beneficial so that the uh
Absolutely.
Uh, council can see what the changes are. Hold on one second. Councilor Norris?
Um, a couple of things. One, I think this entire thing needs to be reworked.
Okay.
I would like, before it goes to committee, would it be more appropriate that it goes back to the director and the Beach and Park Advisory Group to look at this and, and rework it? We can make suggestions through our liaison that is on that um committee. But I, I, I think this is, there, there's a lot here that needs to be discussed and re, reworked. For example, significant contribution. I really don't know what that means. Um, you know, something as simple as application needs to be filled out and submitted. There's a better way to say that. You know, is it a sponsorship or is it a donation? Um, who determines what, what it means, contribution, a di- a significant contribution? Uh, there was something else also. Um, on the application, it says they must justify the request. Well, we kind of know why they're ju- they're asking for the request. It's a memorial bench. Um, so I just think it needs, the whole thing needs to be reworked and looked at. And I, I would suggest sending it back to where it came from, having them learn to work through the process.
And then once we do that, then submit, then refer it to Parks and Rec Committee?
Exactly.
Council Committee?
Exactly.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I don't disagree. My concern is sending it back to Beach and Parks without, uh, they worked on this already. So my concern is if we send it back and they're just gonna say, well, we like it the way it is. They, they're the ones that made it this way. So I don't know, sending it back without clear direction is necessarily helpful to them. And I don't want to just send them back and be like, do more work. Like, I don't um know that that will result in the work product that we're expecting.
Yeah, if we just send this back and say, fix this, and we don't identify what this is, that's not helpful to them. Or rewrite this whole thing.
I wrote notes. It's, there was, there's a significant contribution. There was a question of what that was and justification. So uh, we have starting points in regards to bringing it back, at least for the Beach and Parks Committee to rework. Some of this language was the language that had been in this resolution from oh-five and then twenty nineteen. So we could work together with the committee to give them the previous ones and see. I, I mean, it's up to, I, I, I'm just, I'm willing to do that with the committee first. Um, one more try, um, and if not, and then if we, if it still does not come up in a manner that's successful, then, then by all means, uh, we could bring it back.
All right. I want to let the Deputy Mayor finish her point.
Thank you. Um, so I guess the other part of my comment than if we're going, because I have a lot of comments on this form, so I didn't want to throw it all at this meeting because I feel like it's a lot. But from the perspective of someone who has a memorial bench, if you gave me this form and told me to justify why I should have a memorial bench at the beach, I think the wording is problematic when you give this to a person whose loved one has just died, who wants a memorial. And then we hit them with this kind of abrasive language. And I understand, um, like even the significant contribution and justifying why you deserve a bench at the beach, giving that to a grieving person, I think, is a little bit cruel. Um, and I, again, I understand, I hundred percent agree we needed application because even when I did mine, I was like, okay, what do I do? What do I write? You know? And I took a long time to get back to you with the, what I wanted on the plaque and all of that. So some direction, hundred percent, is, I think, great. I, I think the way that it's worded and approached is, needs to be reevaluated. Um, and just like I said, coming from a person who has gone through that process, I would throw this paper in a pile and never finish it.
So again, I'll just, for, just for purposes of the initial resolution of two thousand and five, the word justification was already there. Justification is not in red. That word's been in this, this resolution since it started, so I'm just trying to, they didn't, so we're, I'm fine with making some changes of where some other piece, and not everybody has a memorial bench at the beach right now either. When we had the incident that we had in eighteen or nineteen, I can't remember what year it was, we had a ton of people put benches out there. I mean, the fifty-five, fifty-five alive, fifty-five alive club from the senior center has a beach there. They felt that they needed the support. So when we have forty benches in one location, the Beach and Parks Committee thought they wanted to try to find a way to bring that back into what it was really meant to be, and, because it's kind of got it away from that. But um, if you, you direct me whichever direction you want to go with this, and, and I'll work with it.
Let me talk, let me talk to the council. Would you rather send it to committee and let committee take your inputs? You can send inputs to me. I'll forward them to committee and do that. Or would you rather send an email to the, to me or the director, CC me on your changes? I mean, what is, I'm open to an approach, whatever the council wants. Uh, you know, maybe even if, even if some of the language in here is pre-existing, that doesn't mean that it might not be offensive.
Correct. I agree.
So uh, at a minimum, it may need grooming.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm open to, to whatever the council's will is uh on how to address that. Whether that's to make the referral to the committee and then get input so that the committee can then uh make recommendations to Beach and Parks and to Director Hill? Or however you want to handle it? Do you want to? And then Paul, uh, Councilor Norris, I'll get you next.
My inclination to not send it back to Beach and Parks is also because I attended the last meeting, and I know that they're in the middle of doing the rules and the user fees. So tacking this back on to their uh list of things to do is maybe going to push those out to, you know, further. You know what I mean? So I don't know that I, I don't know that it's helpful to put this back on their plate. Um, or time-wise, if we take it to committee first and maybe then send it to them to review, that might make more sense. Uh, I just, I don't want it to fall into oblivion and not get addressed again um, because obviously the, the rules of the beach need to be done, so that's gonna get priority.
Rules are, rules and regulations are done. It's just the user fees, and um, we've actually, the chairman called a special meeting for the end of this month to, to finalize that, so we can get it. We have a public, lack of a better word, we have a publication deadline that we need to get some things done before the end of February. So our goal is to try to have a special meeting, get our user fees done. So if we got all that done by the second week of February, which is our next meeting, this wouldn't be an extra burden because then I could start looking at it. But um, I mean, that's, you, you wouldn't have known that tonight. So it's just one of those things. We're trying to um get some things done a little more expeditiously.
Understand. Councilor Norris?
Um, this is the simplest way I can put it. If we do the work, then the committee and the director are not evolving. Meaning, they're not discussing, they're not forming and shaping. The director is not giving what we may consider professional advice to the committee. So what happens if we do it and it goes back to those individuals, the work is already done. So then it's a point of, yep, it's done. We agree with it. Move on. So then the next thing that comes to the table, they haven't evolved to have critical thinking, critical discussions on what should be happening. So the loop is always gonna be, bring it back to council, we refer it to Parks and B- Committee, and then we end up doing the work of the committee and the director.
Well, I don't think the committee should rewrite this. I think the committee should come up with a list of issues and concerns and questions and drive that back. If, if we don't, if this council does not give the Beach and Parks Committee direction or tell them what's wrong with this, because clearly there are things in here that council is, is unhappy with. But if we send it back and say, fix this, and we don't identify what this is, then it's never gonna get fixed, and they're gonna come back to us and say, okay, we did the best, since you didn't give us any guidance. And then we're gonna say, nope, we still don't like this. Fix it again. Giving them no guidance. They come back and they say, okay, this is our second shot. The second shot's not gonna be nearly as energetic as the first shot, right? And then we get caught up in a do loop. So I, I do understand your concern, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just saying, we, we need, if we want, we as the council, uh, you as the council, sorry. You as the council want uh this, this fixed, revised, so we use revised. Want it revised, then we should probably give them some feedback as to what we're looking for. And I don't know how we give it, that feedback can come from the committee. The feedback can come from council uh sending me an email. I, I will for this issue, I would be, I would not have an issue if you wanted to reach out directly and call the director and say, can we talk about this and here are my recommendations? Those kind of things, because it's, it's important to me that we get this resolved. Go ahead, Councilor Norris.
I absolutely agree with you. I'm just trying to think of a way, how can the process? What can the process look like where we're actually helping
Sure.
the group versus, hey, we fix it for you. What do you think?
Teach them to fish. Got it.
But I do agree with you.
Say again?
But I do agree with you.
Okay. Councilor Piazza?
Thank you. So going back to two thousand and five, um, so we as a council representing the constituents of Groton City. So I'm wondering how that came to be in two thousand and five, if it was from our citizens in Groton City. If so, I think that we need to stand on, stay on that same um strategy. I, I don't really hear that, so I don't know how it came up, if the people on the advisory or the boards or the committees came up with this language and then, and then hearing that it's really not specifically being followed. So in a way, being on the council thinking, well, I'm not really following what was written back two thousand and five, amend it. That's one. So um, I think it could go either way. I don't think, yes, I don't think we should do all the work and do it. I think the most efficient way, which I think would come from the department head, what you think would be the most efficient way, a recommendation from mayor, a recommendation from the mayor, on what would be the best to do. But we do have a new person on the advisory, but also too, would our citizens be able to actually speak up and label their concerns? Because we don't know all the concerns that they would like to have in this application. And then hearing from not only Deputy Mayor and the words, which were not meant to be abrasive, but how she understood it. Because when she's saying it, I had asked for a bench for my son, but then I thought to myself, well, could my, my son have a bench too? And, you know, like I'm saying, then every, you want, everybody has a bench, and so that's where it comes into that underlying significant uh contribution. So with that said, um, my ending question per se is, you have this application on board. What hap- is there a timeline that we really need to get this done?
No, because we have a resolution in place from twenty nineteen, April. We could continue to follow that until we get something.
Okay.
It was, it's just that, if you saw the folder of all our memorial benches, because we do have them all, we scan them all. There's stuff on small pieces of paper. It's not, there's no consistency to how the requests are coming in. And it was one of those things that we kind of wanted to start, the committee started talking about that.
Um, okay.
I want to say it was, so we have three benches now in the parks. Whenever we got our first request for the Washington Park, um, when we put the St. Louis's benches up by the ba, uh, tennis courts, they started looking at this, um, you know.
And when you say they, who is they?
The committee. Cause the, the letters come to the, they come to our office and then they go to the Beach and Parks Committee.
There you go.
And they review them. And then their recommendation comes to the mayor and council about whether or not a memorial bench could, should be, um, granted.
So I think the process could be the same. I mean, that's what it looks like it went to, but you said it had been kind of benched a little bit personally.
Well, it's just with the.
Or just off because you're busy other things. That's why I wanted to ask about the timeline. So I think the process that how it was being, being done is okay, but I, I really don't hear a lot of, uh, city residents having a say in it, you know? And how would we get this, um, in this process now? How would we get our citizens to be able to speak up on what they would like to say about it and what recommendations they have? Cause I don't want to speak for everybody in the city, because I don't know everybody's feeling about it. So how would that be, that would be my main concern. How do we get our citizens involved in this? Whether they, we open it up on the computer, the Grotton City News or whatever, and then it can get fed to the committee and then round it up from there and send it up. And would we want a timeline on completion or, or not?
Okay. So, council, how do we get there from here?
What would be the fastest?
Most efficient, right. But representing the, the citizens, I think.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I think that I mean, I think, I, I agree with Councilor Norris saying that if we think that it should have been done better, then it should go back to the appropriate process. However, I do think that us as city councillors are elected to represent the regular residents. So, for example, I feel like it is my duty, I go out in public. So for, so you're saying, how do we get the people's opinions? So now knowing this is on the board, when I go out into public or when I, I know people, I know a bunch of people who have benches, um, I will ask them, what did you think of the process? How could it be done better? So I will try to solicit those opinions. Um, the people on Beach and Parks Committee are appointed by us, not necessarily elected. I don't expect them to spend all of their free time surveying residents, because I don't, it'd be great if they also did that, but I don't see that as necessarily their responsibility. I see that as our responsibility as councillors to, um, be out in the public and try to get those opinions from people. Which is why I think it wouldn't be inappropriate to also put it on the Beach and Parks agenda to discuss. I think to your point, Mayor, you said maybe make a list of the, um, maybe make a list of the things that we think should be on there, the list of things that shouldn't be on there, or, you know, to give some targets. Not to necessarily rewrite the document ourselves, but to say, okay, well, we want to make sure that this, this, and this is on there and make sure we're taking this, this, and this into account. For example, taking into account memorial benches. Often people are getting them, I mean, the people I know that have them, several of the memorial benches were done immediately after someone passed away. So I think, you know, we need to take that into account, um, when we're having an application for that type of, of thing. And, um, yeah, so I, I, I think that maybe should be what comes out of council is a little bit of guidance of, here's some things we want to make sure that are on there. Um, and things that we think maybe we want to avoid. Yeah.
So how do we get that out of council? Councilor Norris?
I, the, the more I think about this, is the more questions I have. So I think it may be wise that it does get referred to committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um,
Okay.
I, I mean, just the whole process and construction of the bench and who does that. I mean, there's a lot to discuss.
Not a problem. We will, so we're not, I'm not going to ask to move this to the mayor and council, what we'll do, we'll refer this to committee. And, uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I'm sorry, can I ask one question of the director?
Please.
Can you tell me how we got to the price for the benches? Um, I know that there's inflation, and I don't remember exactly how much.
So during the, during the course of discussion with the committee, uh, they asked roughly right now, a bench is anywhere between five hundred and sixty to six hundred dollars. But they wanted to include a, um, contingency for maintenance? Cause once that bench becomes, goes on the beach or wherever it goes, where we, the, the, it's getting maintained, uh, by the Department of Parks and Recreation. So it's a budgeted, it's now budgeted in our, in our budget. So they thought it would be another way to be able to maybe work with the finance department, a director to put a fund together so that money stays with that bench for maintenance. Your bench, you know, i- is in an area where it gets hammered quite a bit by, by lately, by the waves. It ends up in the parking lot, but that causes damage to that bench that, um, so they, but they took all that into place. They looked at other communities and what they charged for benches. There's people that spent, in the area that spend up to twelve hundred dollars for a bench. You can get one out on the lighthouse, a ledge light for a thousand dollars. So they kind of took some of the other areas. Um, we shared that information with them, so, and this is the dollar amount they came up with, so that way we have a set fee. As opposed to saying, well, if you do this, it's going to cost that. And then it used to be the plaque, the plaques alone are cost a hu, two hundred and one dollars, just the plaque that goes on, um, on the bench. So, and that doesn't cost, that's not even including the cost to, to construct the bench, because we do make them all in-house. Um, so they, with all that information, that's what they came up with that dollar amount.
Who's they?
Uh, the Beach and Parks Committee.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So your construction costs for the bench, is that just supplies or is that supplies and labor?
Supplies and labor.
So are we not, um, so I know that previously we offered a refurbished bench or a new bench? Are we just doing all new ones now?
They, they talked about doing all new ones now, because there's very few benches now that have the ability to be refurbished because of the concrete legs that we make them out of a form. Most of them, any of the benches that don't have a plaque, which is far and few between, um, are cracked or busted. So we'd have to re, we'd have to rebuild those anyway. And so, and that's labor intensive. It's all, um, there's rebar, there's concrete, there's stone, there's a whole bunch of different product in the, um, actual white legs that go on.
Now, the labor for the benches,
Mm-hmm.
is that overtime labor?
Nope.
Or that's just regular labor?
It takes about ten, ten hours manpower to build a bench. And our guys make roughly, well, it fluctuates, because there are different wages, but I don't know, thirty, thirty-four to thirty-six dollars an hour.
Okay.
And then the materials.
They can also be open for discussion at committee.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I'll have more discussions at committee, because I, I have concerns that we're charging labor for something if we're, we would pay those laborers anyways. So and I understand that they're doing labor for that bench. But we are not hiring additional labor that is not like a contracted cost. Um, and under, it just seems like under different circumstances, labor is not something that we normally charge for a service that we're doing. So for, for example, when I buy a trash can from Public Works, they drop it off at my house if I want to order one, they're not charging me for that extra labor. Or, you know, because someone might throw it in the back of their truck and drive a special trip. And I think they do often, drive a special trip to go deliver it. We don't charge people for that labor, we do charge them for the supplies. We're not charging them for that labor. So I'm, and I'm not saying you have to answer this now, or, and I think it's a discussion for committee.
Um, memorial benches were work above and beyond what their normal everyday work was when this memorial, when this came into play. I had fifteen benches at the beach in twenty seven, two thousand and seven, when I came in, or eight, six, when we came in. With the memorial benches, they're not benches that were already established in the city. There are benches that are being built for specific locations. So there is a cost to that, because it's not, it's above and beyond what their normal everyday work would be. So they have to take time away from something else to, to build this memorial bench that was not, uh, initially, um, in that location or thought about to put in that location. Um, so that's where the labor costs came into play. And again, this, this policy was all in place when I got here. It's not something I generated, it's something that we've just followed and we've kind of worked with the inflation of materials and labor.
Well, now might be a good time to review the entire process. I mean, you know, how do we get there from here? Why do we have those benches? Are there different benches? Uh, what are the costs of the benches? How do you get a bench? I mean, there are some people that I've talked to that the thing that their, uh, bench is for is that person really liked being at the beach. And they weren't on committees and everything else. So why not recognize that? I mean, why, okay, if you're not a councillor, you can't get a bench. Or if you're not on board and commission, you can't get a bench. So that's kind of says, okay, you're not important. You know, if you're not somebody, whatever that is. And I don't think that's the message we want to send to our residents, so. All right, so we're going to send it to, to committee.
And that's to the Parks and Recreation Committee of Council?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Ford tractor repair?
All right, so down at the beach, we have a nineteen ninety, ninety-eight ninety Ford tractor that is attached to our sand machine. It's the machine that, it's the tractor we've been using since two thousand and eleven to groom the beach. Um, it was the tractor that was outfitted back in two thousand and eleven to be connected to the sand machine and, and so we can keep our, groom our beach and keep it clean. Um, this past summer, week before summer season ended, the tractor just stopped working. So we took it to Cook's, because they've been working on it since I've gotten here. Um, it's a thirty-four-year-old tractor. Um, they kind of had to split it open, lack of a better term, to find out what was wrong with it, but since it was already in that condition, they repaired it. And unfortunate, unfortunately, or fortunately, it's fixed and it's working and it's going to do its job. But it came in over the ten thousand dollar threshold, so I'm here to ask permission to pay the bill. Um, it has been a valuable asset to that actual task that the crew does take care of. And it's now repaired, so it should be, um, it's, should be up and working for, you know, I'm not sure if it's going to last another twelve years, but it should last us a little longer, so we can eventually budget and invest in a new tractor, take the Kubota that's at the park right here, right now, that we've had since oh eight, bring that to the beach and have a new one at the park. So we can, uh.
Okay, uh, Councilor Sheffield, Sam was up first.
Um, how much would a new, uh, truck cost if, you know, if it wasn't repaired? What's?
So we've been pricing out new tractors and they're roughly sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars for a brand new one. Um, the Kubota that we currently have here at the park was bought in oh eight for thirty-three nine. So that gives you a night, and that was a long time ago.
Right.
So yeah, so we've been, we've been pricing things out at roughly sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars for a new one. So then we would take the current one that we have at the park house, which is the oh eight, and bring that to the, to the beach. So it wouldn't be a new one at the beach, because with the wear and tear and the salt air.
Right.
Um, it wouldn't get damaged right away.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
This is coming out of the operating budget? So was this a planned repair?
It was not.
So where in the?
Vehicle operations.
Okay, so we've, it fits under the amount that we had allocated for potential repairs for all the vehicles?
All our vehicles, yep.
Is this, so this being unexpected, is this going to impact your budget for the other vehicles that you have?
I don't believe so. Um, the only unknown in our other vehicle operations is always, is fuel. I, because I don't know that cost until the end of the, closer to the end of the year, because we kind of get it all billed at once. Um, so diesel, fuel, and gasoline would be my only ones I, because that's a, it's very, that I don't have until the end of the close of the, near the end of June. But we always budget for equipment, we have quite a bit, so we have to, you know, was I expecting it to be this high? No. So, but it has, it's, it is repaired and we have been using it since these last current storms. It helps us, it has a, a bucket on the front too, so it helps us move some of the sand around. It's been blowing into the parking lot and into the driveway, so it's got another purpose down there other than the sand machine. So it has been enabled us to do that, um, this past winter too, so.
So when was this repair done?
It was, it was done in, uh, so the, the truck, the tractor got towed out of the beach September. The repair work was done, they had to find, they had to, I don't know, I'm not a mechanic, so I go, but they said they had to split it open to find out what was wrong with it. And then they had to refine the parts and repair it. This is a thirty-five-year-old tractor, so it sat at Cook's for a couple of weeks, because they needed to get the parts. But ultimately it got repaired, so we can use it.
So did they send you an estimate?
They did not. They did not.
So you didn't have to approve the cost before they ordered the parts?
I, I did not. I, I didn't know what the parts consisted of. Again, I'm not a mechanic, but I knew this had it, I couldn't take it off their site, because it was in two pieces.
Right, I'm not saying that, but.
I, so. Even if I, I don't know where else I would have, I know what you're getting at, because I didn't have an estimate cost, but I don't know where I would have been able to, if I had to get three quotes to fix it, I don't know where I would have gotten that.
I, I'm not even saying that, but like, when I bring my car to the shop to do, say, an oil change, then they send me a little thing that says, also, we think you need to do these eighteen things that cost eighty billion dollars. Generally, that's how mechanic works, is they take your car and look at it, and then they dump all these costs on you.
Right.
But it's usually written.
I don't know if they actually knew the exact cost of some of the parts, not knowing where they were, their ability to find them first. I think they went that route, once they found out what they needed, um, and then they found the parts. Again, a thirty-five-year-old piece of machinery. Um, so I think that was one of those, they had to chase some of this before they could give me a, an, lack of a better word, an estimate, never mind repairs.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My concern is that it doesn't fit into our purchasing policy to get an, an, this bill looks like we got it on December eleventh, which would seem like that's after they did all of the work. Our purchasing policy is, is it not to review estimates and quotes before we expend that amount of money? Or don't we have to issue a purchase order?
I'm thinking under normal circumstances, maybe, but I, I've had this towed away from the beach. They came and put it on a trailer. They had to take it apart.
Right.
In order to find out what parts they needed to get to put it back together and make it operational. So I wouldn't have to buy a seventy-five thousand dollar piece of equipment. They, we kept calling, we were on the phone with them every other week to find out where we were at with this. And when we finally got, uh, finally got them to tell us where we're at, it was, oh, we've, we've, we fixed it all but one part. You should have it in a week. They've had it since September. So I, they didn't, no, they didn't give us estimates. Uh, I don't know, we, I asked multiple times for certain parts of estimates, but they weren't, they were chasing parts. I wasn't even guaranteed that they could fix it. Um, but it, it, it is, I, again, I didn't expect it to be this expensive. But again, I don't know where else I would have been able to take it to get it fixed.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
My concern is that they didn't give us a price until they were done with the repair. So if that price came in at, say, twenty-five thousand dollars, we may have instead looked at replacing this item. And it just seems to me that that is, uh, not, and I understand, I'm not saying that we should have taken it somewhere else or anything, but my concern is that there was no purchase order issued or knowledge of what about the price was going to be for something this large. And then to come, you know, this is just over the ten thousand dollar threshold, so I get that. But my concern is, what if it had been thirty thousand dollars?
I, I'm, I'm, I believe if Cook's saw that it was going to be anywhere higher than fifteen or twenty, they would have reached out to us. I don't think they did it, I, I, I mean, and they, I may not have shared with them that, hey, if it goes over I don't think they did it, I, I, I mean, and they, I may not have shared with them that, hey, if it goes over ten thousand dollars, let me know. Um, it may not have been one of those things in my, in front of my mind when I was trying to figure out whether I should repair it, whether I should start looking to, I don't have it budgeted for a new tractor. For, come June one, um, we wouldn't have been able to clean the beach. But because our other tractor's not outfitted to take the sand machine. Uh, it was, so I, I guess I'm coming in and asking for, please accept my apologies for maybe not doing this correctly. Um, but I, I, we got it fixed. The bill is five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents over the ten thousand dollar threshold. Um, I didn't anticipate, again, I'm, I don't know mechanical stuff. He, and, and he could have told me it was going to be this, that, or that. And I would have been, oh, okay, that's not going to be a couple hundred dollars.
Right.
So I, I, so.
No, I, I'm not, I don't think, so I don't think, uh, I'm not going to speak for Deputy Mayor Depot. But I want to try to swage blame here. The, the thing is that a dealer should provide us a quote beforehand to give us the option to say no. And they didn't do that. Because now, once they fixed it, we don't have a choice.
Correct.
We have to pay them.
Very much understand, yep.
We'd lose in court. To Deputy Mayor Depot's point though, had it come in at twenty, twenty or twenty-five thousand, the, the estimate, you would have come to me and we'd have talked. And I would have said, was the new one cost?
Right.
And then I would have got Finance Director and Bob and said, all right, do, based on the age of it, based on the operating, those kind of things, should we consider purchasing new as opposed to repairing this? That, we didn't, that didn't happen because they didn't give us a quote.
Correct.
So the next time we deal with them, we probably want to make sure. And actually going forward regardless of who we're dealing with, we'll make sure we have quotes before, uh, we obligate to spend the money. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I, I just want to comment on that. I absolutely do not expect you to know the mechanic stuff or how much something will cost. Um, I, I think they, the vendor should have done that for you. They should have known to let you know because you are not a mechanic and you would have no idea. Like, they probably could have told you one of the part names and they know it costs five thousand dollars, but you don't know that. So I a hundred percent agree. I don't expect you to have that knowledge. I certainly don't. My concern is that they didn't think that they should send us a quote when it was going to be thousands of dollars. Um, so I just, I think like the mayor said, next time we deal with them, I think that would be a smart thing to do. I, that's my concern is if you send something else to them to repair, is it going to come back forty thousand dollars or, you know, something exorbitant? And it's going to run you into something where you could have had a new piece of equipment instead. Um, because I think everyone, we, we need to maintain the beach. And all residents appreciate, you know, keeping our equipment up to date. Because it's a very important, important part of what we do for the community is maintain the beach. So a hundred percent, I'm, I'm not saying it was not a necessary expense or any of those things. I just have concerns that they didn't think that they should send us a quote first.
Right.
And I don't know if some of that had to do with the fact that trying to locate the parts was more of a hindrance maybe? I don't know. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Counselor Norris?
Moving forward, should we be talking about replacing this vehicle? What do you anticipate is the life expectancy now even with this repair? Um, I don't know if they've done a full inspection and said, well, you know what, something else potentially could go in a year. So where's the, um, the consideration for that, if you don't mind?
So that is something that is being looked into and it's actually more so not, well, not technically replace this piece of equipment. What we would do is we have an existing tractor at the park house that was bought in oh eight. What we would do is we would transfer that one down to the beach. We, you know, retire the Ford, take the Kubota down and then buy a new one for up here at the park. Where, so we wouldn't be exposed to the, exposed to the environment as much as it is down at the beach area. And we're looking at potentially probably over the next two years budgeting for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Uh, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So looking at this, when they did that, um, did they say, per se, I know weather has a lot to do with the environment and so forth. Did they say specifically why these things failed like they do? I know it's thirty-eight years old, blah, blah, blah. But are we looking at also the use of it or maintenance? Or did they suggest anything in that? So, you know, all of a sudden, we don't have, splines stripping out to me is like, um, stripping your gears basically.
And it may just be due to age and location. It is in the sand every, every other day um, down at the beach. Um, it could just be the wear and tear of the age of it.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we've, we've maintained it through Cook's over the course of time that I was here, but nothing this large. I think maybe the most expensive would be less than five hundred dollars. Uh, so.
So it does get sent to them for maintenance, like maybe to
Mm-hmm.
Clean it out?
Clean it out, yep.
Change oils or whatever it is.
Well, my, one of my guys, we take, my crew is pretty able to do hydraulic fluids and the oil changes and stuff in it. But, you know, overall maintenance based on the location, being that it's in the sand and at the, at the saltwater, it does get looked at every year.
But these, but this tractor is what it's made for though, to be in that environment or not, or not?
I don't, don't think so. It was the tractor that was available when we got the sand groomer in two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. I will take a motion to move this to the mayor and council on February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Leslie, I'm going to bring you up next, but I'm going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Right, one more hour to go. Man, I did some push-ups today.
Did, did we provide counsel with that sheet, that extra sheet of paper? Remember the thing that I sent you? All right. Now would be a good time to give that to counsel. Well, in, in the, in the engineering study that was done, the second sheet, uh, didn't get included. And so the second sheet is what has the, the conclusion and recommendation from the engineer, which drove going to the real estate committee and driving coming to here. Thank you. All right.
Thanks.
Are we, are we ready? Okay. Uh, we are out of recess. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. The... So we're, I'm gonna move F up, which is, uh, planning and zoning, the eight twenty-four recommendation on the Costa property. Wesley, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Um, so, we've been looking into what to do and what order to do things and how to get things moving with the, um, the Upper Thames Street Park and the Lower Thames Street Park. This is in regard to the Upper Thames Street Park. This is, we were, we, as you know, we've looked at, um, other properties for other departments, um, for space, and that's something that, you know, we've been looking at internally and, as well as hiring somebody to do space analysis. Um, and we wanted to make sure that, that, um, we wanted to see if it was possible to reuse the Costa House for city purposes. And so, um, based on the requirements for an eight twenty-four and for, um, the city disposing of, um, whether it's deemed excess property or not, it's just the city getting rid of either property, the land, the parcel, or a building. Um, we went through the entire process, checked off everything on it that had to be checked off meticulously this time. And, um, it was, and our, and we did have our consultants go in and take a look at the inside of the house. From the outside of the house, it's actually quite deceiving. The outside of the house really, you know, looks well-kept. The, um, we've been doing the maintenance on it for the last several months, but, um, even before that, it was, you know, always very well-kept, and it's a little deceiving to look at it and say, oh, how could it not be the same way inside? But it's not. Um, it's not dilapidated in the sense that, you know, the roof's falling in or sheet rock is coming off the walls. But, um, as you can see from the report to the real estate committee, um, that was from the, from, um, Wright Pierce. Um, and I, I, I know it's late, so I'm just gonna reach the last piece, which is, based on the observations noted, it's the opinion of Wright Pierce that the structure is not suited for use as an office space for city staff. Even if funds were expended to upgrade and renovate the building, the bill, and bring it up to code for business occupancy, the building incited many shortcomings that would make such expenditures questionable. One example of that is ADA compliance. Um, you enter on the bottom floor, and there's not a reasonable way to get to an upper floor. That's just one example. I am trying to be mindful of everybody's time, but I wanna be thorough, so. So, when that report came out, the real estate committee voted unanimously to agree to demolish the house with an eye toward having that parcel joined with, um, the parcel next to it, which is actually two parcels that were combined. They used to be two houses there. Um, and then we have a clean slate to look at the kinds of things we've been talking about doing for the Upper Thames Street Park. And some of these include, um, making a pedestrian connection between Fort Griswold and the park itself, um, putting in, uh, an amphitheater, uh, putting in some additional parking, possibly putting in a small building, not a, not a house, but a small building that could be used for a visitor's center or for, um, a work area for the harbor master. We've also looked at the possibility of putting, you know, sort of open wraparound porches around that to make it have a little heft on the site, but also to have it be, you know, people could come and, and bring their musical instruments and just be out there and playing or meeting their buddies there to play. And having air, you know, grading the area so that people could sit and enjoy music, tables with games on them, things like that. There are a lot of ideas. There've been a couple of sketches that have been done. But we've really been waiting to figure out what was gonna happen with this house, whether we were gonna reuse it or, um, take it down and then grade it so that it's stable and figure out what to do with it in a way that we can do it efficiently, but also economically. It may be some, the improvements may get phased in. Somebody may come up with other ideas that haven't been mentioned before. But this, we needed one thing to move out of the way so that we could figure out what our next steps were, and, um, and this became the one thing. So, um, the eight twenty-four was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They voted to give you, the council, a favorable recommendation to demolish the house and regrade to, to stabilize the site in anticipation of, um, then working on a, a comprehensive design that, um, that could be implemented. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. We'll open the floor for discussion. Uh, deputy, I'll get to you in a moment. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, we've actually, since we purchased, I think even in our discussions on purchasing this property, we had discussed the potential of demolishing it because of the condition of the inside. Um, I know I read some of the notes from the real estate committee meeting, and the public works director said the floors are buckling, and, um, obviously, the contracted engineering firm agrees that it's not worth saving. And I think that's where the council had been leaning, um, as well in previous discussions. So, I, I do think that's the right thing to do. The resolution does not have a price on it. Do we know the cost of demolishing the house, or is that gonna have to come to us later?
So, what, what I'm asking for tonight is to get permission to demolish the house. And then we have to go out with an RFP for the demolition of the house. Now, we've already done, uh, an abatement survey, so we know what the hazardous materials are associated with it. So, we'll need to share that, uh, with the contractors so that they can, uh, figure that into the amount on the demolition of the house. So I will be coming back to you. If it's under ten thousand, now, I mean, I'll be coming back to you, but if it's over ten thousand, and I'm not, we have, we have an internal dialogue going on, basically, uh, with staff on whether or not we think it's gonna be more or less than ten thousand. But we're, you know, we're not gonna know unless we go out.
And that, uh, just to
For bids.
piggyback on to that, um, everywhere you see demolition in the, in this memo, it includes the abatement and removal of contaminated, whatever it is. Uh, we do know there's asbestos in there. So, abatement, demolition, and then removal. So we're not, um, unless we're convinced otherwise, we're not gonna take the demolition debris and put it in a hole.
I was gonna say, also, I wanna be clear, I don't intend to tear the house down and put it in the basement. We're gonna get rid of all foundation and everything else caused, because if, uh, we need a landscape, I don't wanna have to landscape around debris. So that will all be figured into the cost. Did that answer?
Yes.
Did that address your question?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Sheffield?
This was the Costa property. I believe I was the one person that did not vote for the purchase of this property. But I would prefer, if we do decide to demolish, uh, I would like to see the dollar figure first, uh, before having the green light to put it down. So, uh, I'd like to see how much we're spending first before.
Well, I need to get permission to do it before I get a, go ahead and get quotes. That's why I came to council, to get permissions to demolish it. And then this, this authorizes me to go to the next step, which is to find out how much it's gonna cost to demolish.
Well, then, but what if you don't like?
Second bite at the apple.
Okay.
If you will.
Okay, so, yeah, so if we don't like the cost, then we won't tear it down, is basically, you know, if it's, if it's excessive.
When I get, when I get a cost, I will come back to council for the discussion, deliberation, and debate. And then council will, uh, evaluate it, and then, uh, if, if my recommendation is to demolish it and I come with a cost, uh, and council says, no, we don't wanna do that, then we're gonna have to look at other options.
Okay.
Because the house is not habitable as it is, and the cost to refurbish that house and make it... So what you have is you have a residential property that you now have to make into a commercial or business property. So it's gotta be ADA compliant. There's all kinds of things that we have, that we would have to do. And now, at this point, we have, now, we have kept the heat on, uh, because we don't want pipes to burst, how we did. So we kept the heat on, but we also drained pipes, drained sewer pipes, put antifreeze in, so that we wouldn't have to worry about all that stuff. But even with the cold and moisture and stuff like that, we had buckling in the floors, so.
So have we done anything structurally since the purchase, uh, as far as upkeep of the property?
Nope.
You haven't done anything, okay.
Nope. Well, we have maintained the grounds. We have done no maintenance on the house proper. What we did was, I told them to maintain heat, but also to drain all the water and sewer, so they wouldn't have to worry about freezing temperatures and bursting pipes and extra money and that kind of thing.
So water's still flowing?
No.
No, it's not, okay.
It's all scared and drained.
Okay.
Anything else? Counselor Norris?
Thanks. Good plan. Real quick, procedurally, was there a new site plan that you had to do separate, or was that part of the eight dash twenty-four?
The site, there've been sketches that have been done, but not, they're not, um, completed site plans that are, um, good enough for construction. They're not construction documents. There are, there was one that was done by, uh, Twig and Sprig, and one that I did. It started out on a whiteboard.
Sure. But there was none that needed to follow up or be attached to the eight dash twenty-four?
No, we're, this is just to, this is just for the purposes of demolishing and, um, you know, removing the debris and doing the...
You mean like an A-one survey, that kind of thing?
No.
Okay.
It, it's just, uh, just regular site plan that should be built in.
Understand. Understand, okay.
Yeah, the, one of the reasons that we didn't do that, and I, I, is that we were going back and forth, do we wanna do an, an A-two-T-two survey of the site and, and go the path of getting somebody to design the park before we demolish it? Or do we do wanna demolish it first and then see what it is we're left with, because we don't know what's under there? Um, so.
Any, uh, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So when we were talking about that the foundation would be pulled up through the demolition, um, so I'm assuming that would be filled, not filled on debris, but it would be filled?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be included in the demolition costs?
Well, yeah. We're gonna want it all, you know, demolished and filled.
Everything, right. And do we have, even, I know, we have to say yes to this, and then you go out for the bid, but do we have a timeline we'd like to get that done in?
Well, I like to get it done sooner than later.
Yeah.
But, uh, I wanted to get it done last year, but there were some things that got in the way with the, you know, the, the, uh, Manning's, not Manning, but with, you know, putting IT different places, do we have enough place for staff? We do have a plan, a plan that's almost finalized, uh, that I've been told doesn't even consider the cost of property, so we're okay with that. But once, uh, mayor and council, once the council approves, then I'm gonna move forward to do this as quickly as we can.
See, I had another question, but, um, I've lost it just real quickly, but I did, I'm kinda confused on why I see the other pictures. But why do we have, uh, where is it? Let me find it. Why do we have a commercial property card for Shenacasa within our packet?
I think it's a mistake.
Okay. Cause I was, I, I had already read this when I received it, and I didn't see the Shenacasa property in there, but I just wanted to double-check, is that something?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
No.
It's not that one.
It's not this one. This is the right one. Oh, it is?
And I keep going. Nope, right after that.
Right here.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause I was looking, I was like, that's not in Thames Street.
I think it maybe just got stuck in the papers when I went.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify to, I was like, well, we're not discussing it. It's not in the.
Oh, it's, yes, it probably, no, it has nothing to do with it.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, cause I did, I read my pack, and I was like, they didn't mention the Shenacasa. Like, did I miss something?
Thank, no, that's a good catch. Cause when I was going through this, I didn't see, I didn't catch that. I did see that we forgot this.
Well, good catch, too.
Was important to me.
Right, well, it's a good catch for us.
So.
And my next question is, I'm sorry, uh, I was just gonna say, how would this be budgeted? For the demolition? Where would this be coming out of?
Uh, I have money. I have, I've talked to, I've talked to finance director. I do have money available. I do not know a specific source, but, again, when I come to council, I will have you, I will have the funding source as part of that resolution.
And so just to clarify, in order to get the bids, we have to agree on the demolition? To move it forward?
Well, that's the normal process. We agree that we're gonna demolish, and then I go out and we get bids for the demolition. Cause if council says, no, we're not gonna demolish, then why do I go get bids?
Right, I understand, right.
Council can still say, no, we don't like these bids, and then, uh, we'll have discussion, again, discussion, deliberation, debate, and we'll have to figure out where we're gonna go. But I plan on making it so that, so what I've been trying to do with this council and the last council is make sure that we have all the information that you need so that you can get the yes.
Well, I mean, for me, I mean, I know we discussed a long time ago this property and about purchasing and so forth and so on, but, I mean, with the recommendations so forth and so on, you know, to me, it's just, if we don't take care of this property, we can't do anything with the property. It's, to me, it's adding to the issues we have on Thames Street.
Right.
So, you know, I think moving forward would be best. That's just what I say right now.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of, uh, February fifth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
One abstain.
One abstain. Sheffield, abstain? Okay. All right. So we're done. Thank you. Is Sierra not here, right? Okay. All right. Counsel, it is nine o'clock. So, we have boards and commissions, the economic development, EDC rules and regulations, and then we have our council rules and regulations. If council, I will, you know, whatever, whatever council's, uh, will is, but, but my recommendation is to move these to the committee of the whole on February, uh, hold on, February twelfth. Second Monday, February twelfth.
You can have a special Cal?
Nope, it's regular Cal.
On the twelfth, second week?
And the reason, okay, I, I understand, I'm gonna explain it to you.
Okay.
Why is it spe- why is it not special? Why is it regular? Cause we submitted it to the Secretary of State, so it is a scheduled meeting.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Didn't know.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
My only concern with moving all of these is that the boards and commission reappointments are, the ones that are on this list, all expire on February first.
Yep.
So if we push the, these to the committee of the whole of the twelfth, then we're pushing it to be those to be approved the nineteenth. And, um, those might take us, uh, a whole five minutes to review, so.
We could, we could do that. I will tell you that I've, uh, talked to my attorney, and my attorney has said, as long as they're seated, they're in, until they're not. Understand your point about being correct and it only taking five minutes. If you want, we'll just go through real quick on the reappointments. Is council okay with that? It'll take five minutes?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so let's do that. So let's do that first. Where am I here? All right, so the first one is Board of Ethics, Hallie Keeler. Uh, she is inter, she is currently on the Board of Ethics and wishes to remain on Board of Ethics. On the historic, uh, Eastern Point Historic District Commission, Mark Granitowski and Sarah, uh, Pulteau are both on the committee, and they wish to stay on the committee. So, any questions or comments from council?
I have a.
Counselor Piazza?
Um, I just want to know, do we have any openings on either of these?
Yes, on Board of Ethics, even if she's reappointed, there is gonna be one, there is one vacancy currently.
Okay, so, has anybody applied for the, those?
No.
Positions, okay. All right.
Nope, and I have went out to both chairs of the committees and let them know that we have vacancies.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I'll take, I will take a motion to move, uh, all of these to the mayor and council meeting, uh, February fifth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. So we will do economic, we'll move the economic development, and we'll move council rules and regulations to the, uh, committee of the whole on February twelfth. All right, with that.
So with that said.
Counselor Piazza, you have the floor?
I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, we're not gonna repeat, resend these out. We, we just keep these for that meeting, correct? Save some trees. Uh, I don't know if that's allowed.
Keep them.
Right, that's what I'm saying, not to re-
No, I agree.
To redo it.
Yeah.
Okay.
They would, she would have to, for the agenda purposes of.
Right, I'm just making sure that, you know.
So she could give you, she could send you an agenda. And, but, the backup and everything else should stay the same. So you can keep the backup here.
So be in our packet on the computer, but we don't need to waste a paper.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.
Thank you.